Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our last meeting in November for council. I just, just because there are so many other meetings that are going on in the building at the same time, just in case there's someone in the audience who is in the, in the wrong place, there is upstairs a planning board meeting as well as a zoning board meeting. So if you're looking for those meetings, you should be upstairs. See? Okay. Okay.
Well done.
Thank you very much. Very, okay. And I would like to welcome our deputy clerk Nicole Sarna here for her first time up at the dais, so we'll all try to be nice to her, and you will see how nice I am by, because we'll be changing around what we're doing tonight, so we'll all try to follow. Anyway, with that, deputy clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the city clerk's office in the preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated January 4th, 2018, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Baumann?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Mr. McTirren?
Here.
Ms. Ogden?
Here.
President Naido?
Here.
Okay. I'd like to call on Frank Giuliano, the director of the Reeves Reed Arboretum, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Deputy clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting, as authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 33, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV, also on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the city clerk's office at Rlicates@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, on to minutes for approval. Do I have a year, a motion to approve the minutes of regular and closed session? Motion. November 7th, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? I'll abstain since I missed that meeting. Okay, moving on to reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. We have a long agenda, and I just have a few announcements. First, I want to congratulate our high school football team for defeating Raaway on Sunday. And I also want to thank, there are many, many people, parents, coaches, other volunteers who helped get these teams to where they, they shine. But particularly this past weekend, to get the snow off the field, I want to thank Frank Sheppi and his guys who did that for free. I also want to congratulate the students at the high school who were in the play Peter and the Star Catcher. Again, they had to adjust and be resilient. They, they expected to do the play Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Instead, they did two Saturday, one Sunday, and they did a great job. So I'm really grateful to them and all the parents and teachers and friends who support all their work. And then just, I want to close just very briefly and say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. We have many, many things to be thankful for, every single one of us. And as we give thanks with our families, I hope we keep in mind the people in this country who are suffering, particularly frankly, the folks in California who are really suffering with the wildfires. So thank you for everyone, for everything that we all do to, for each other, to support our community, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will postpone our city administrators' report for a little later on in the agenda, just before the public comments, and then, and then we'll have him speak. He will be giving a debrief on what happened with regard to the road conditions and snow conditions last week. For my city council president's report, I just want to report on two things. One, I think those of us who traveled by New Jersey Transit for the last couple of weeks, and certainly last week, have noticed a real deterioration in our services. Councilman Gould and I happened on last Friday to be on the same train. We did not know until we got to the Summit platform that we were on the same train. But that train took us two hours to get home. It takes us basically two hours to get into the city nowadays. There is no predictability about when you're going to get in and when you're going to get out. Part of the basis or the property values that we have in this town and how we've been able to maintain it is because we have the Midtown Direct Line. But that is only worth something if you can actually use it to get to work in city on a proper basis. Cannot plan a meeting, cannot plan a conference call if you need to do it always on the, on the train. And so I urge folks to contact their legislators in Trenton and in Congress, and make it very clear that we need to get attention to what is going on with New Jersey Transit. This is not a sustainable situation for the residents of Summit. It will come back to haunt us in really bad ways if we let this continue the path that's on. So that's, that's my message to you guys out there, listening. The second thing I want to just mention is, last night, there was an interfaith Thanksgiving service that was held at Cavalry. It was a beautiful service done, but it reminded us of the need to help those here in Summit who are dealing with poverty. There are a lot of folks here in our own town that really struggle, and we had a person who came up to the podium and spoke about how she struggled to get assistance with food stamps. She has a daughter here in town, she has a bachelor's degree, and yet, there's a lot of hardship. And when we, one of the things I think we as council, the mayor, all of us, are always mindful of, is what the consequences of our decisions are to a lot of folks here who don't come into council chambers, who don't send emails, who don't make phone calls. But because, that is because they are struggling day to day with their lives. And we have to be cognizant of the fact that if we can do things, we should do those things that'll improve their condition. And so those are, those are my two reports. And with that, I'm going to now change up the agenda, so for those of you who are following the agenda, what we're going to do is, we're going to do safety resolution first in order that all of our officers who are here waiting to see a swearing-in can see that, and then, and they can proceed. So I'll call on Councilman Gould for safety resolution.
Thank you, Council President Naido. So I propose a resolution to authorize the promotion of auxiliary police officer to sergeant. This is Officer Danielle Luther, who's been, according to Sergeant Charles Daly in a letter to Chief Weck, has been, she's taken on a leadership role among her, amongst her peers from the start of her training while at the Auxiliary Police Academy. He says, without reservation, she has earned the respect of the Summit Auxiliary Officers. And, and Chief Weck agrees that they feel that, that all current and future auxiliary officers will directly benefit from her leadership, while at the same time elevating morale and encouraging other officers to set goals for future advancement. So I wholeheartedly move this resolution forward.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, with that, Madam Mayor, would you proceed?
Chief Weck? Officer Luther and Sergeant Daly, please. Oh, and, and, please, I'm still, how long? I'll tell you a little bit about Danielle. Danielle Luther was raised in Rhode Island. She graduated the John H. Stammeler Auxiliary Police Academy in the spring of 2017. Auxiliary Officer Luther has been employed with the Summit Police Department since 2008 and serves as the administrative clerk. Auxiliary Officer Luther was a previous resident in the City of Summit for 13 years. Currently, Auxiliary Officer Luther resides in Basking Ridge with her husband Lou and three daughters, Alexandra, age eight, Abigail, age six, and Mackenzie, age four. Needs to say, Officer Luther is a very busy woman. And I would like to thank Sergeant Daly for being here. Sergeant Daly is the, the chief of the, oh, that's a wrong word.
No, that's a great word.
The chief of the Auxiliary Police Officers. So, shall we? Put your right hand on the Bible. Okay. Please repeat after me. I, Danielle Luther, do solemnly swear. I, Danielle Luther, solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. The Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith. And that I will bear true faith. And allegiance. And allegiance. To the same. To the same. And to the governments established. And to the governments established. In the United States. In the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully. That I will faithfully. Impartially. Impartially. And justly. And justly. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. Of the position of. Of the position of. Auxiliary police sergeant. Auxiliary police sergeant. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God.
Congratulations.
One more. One, two. One, two. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
One more.
One, two.
I think he's going to hear that again.
Thank you. Everyone else in?
Okay. And next, the mayor has a proclamation for children's grief awareness, and Mandy Zucker is accepting on behalf of Imagine. I think she's here, right?
Okay. Thank you for coming here tonight, Mandy.
Thank you for having me.
Whereas Children's Grief Awareness Day is held the Thursday of November annually and is designed to help us all become more aware of the needs of grieving children and the benefits children obtain through the support of others. And whereas Children's Grief Awareness Day provides an opportunity for all of us to raise awareness of the painful impact that the death of a loved one has in the life of a child, and to make sure that young people receive the support they need. And whereas an estimated one out of 15 children in the United States will experience the death of a parent or sibling before they reach the age of 18, over 4.8 million youth are bereaved, and the number more than doubles by age 25 to 12.7 million. And whereas childhood bereavement is a prevalent and critical public health issue that can have a profound impact on future well-being, and over 109,000 New Jersey children ages zero to 18 are currently bereaved due to the death of a parent. And whereas Summit is fortunate to have access to two local children's grief support centers in nearby neighborhoods, Imagine and Good Grief, and both are free year-round for children ages three to 18, young adults aged 18 to 30, and for the parents of the bereaved children. Now therefore, I, Nora Radus, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim November 15, 2018, as Children's Grief Awareness Day in the City of Summit, and I ask that all citizens please join me in supporting Children's Grief Awareness Month, and for recognizing the importance of children's grief awareness, and for understanding that, for understanding that providing support for grieving youth is essential for the future health and well-being of our children, families, and society. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 15th day of November in the year 2018. And I do recognize that today is not November 15. But that is the National Grief Awareness, Children's Child's Grief Awareness Day, so I wasn't going to change it just because we were here tonight, so congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for all your strong work.
Absolutely.
All right. Now, we're going to return back to the schedule, but if there's any folks that want to depart, we'll give you guys like a minute, and folks can depart, and then we'll start back on with presentations. Okay. So the first presentation is about the state of the Reeves Reed Arboretum. Frank Giuliano, the executive director, is here with us. Frank, do you want to come on?
So Frank Giuliano, J-U-L-I-A-N-O. I'm at 160 Cabrini Boulevard, New York 10033. And I'm honored and pleased to be here to see my friends and to talk about Reeves Reed Arboretum. So I did a quick little SWAT study for Reeves Reed Arboretum's report this year, and many of you know what that is, so I'm going to go ahead with that. So let's start with success. Last year, Reeves Reed was voted the best garden in New Jersey by readers of New Jersey family, and this year, we were awarded the Good Neighbor Award by the Suburban Chamber of Commerce. How did this come about? Reeves Reed is about relationships, and these accolades are a testament to our belief that we are more than just a lovely place. We are people, passionate, energetic, creative, inspired people, who believe that nature and public green space is transformative and vital to the community. In fact, according to a recent study reported in the New York Times about the physical effects on the brain of visiting nature, a walk in the park may soothe the mind and, in the process, change the workings of our brains in ways that improve our mental health. With that, I think you already knew. In 2018, we presented, this year, we've presented a record number of programs, over 300, and that's not counting our camps. Think about it, it's virtually a program a day. Daffodil Day 2018 in April hosted a record 2,200 people on the grounds in one day. These are amazing numbers for us. I think it's an amazing number for Reeves Reed Arboretum when you think about where we've come. But there's something interesting about that. Our membership has increased by 20% about three years ago when we partnered with Investors Bank. Now, that's stabilized, it's about 550 members annually. Of those 550 members, only half are Summit residents. I have a rhetorical question to put to all of, all of us. Why? I don't know why. We have approached all the Summit, City of Summit residents, I'm sorry, City of Summit employees, and we offer free family membership to every City of Summit employee. And yet, in the time that we've offered this, I can count on one hand how many people have taken us up on this. So I need to understand what's happening with Summit regards to the arboretum. And anytime you guys have information for me, please tell me. Our job readiness program in partnership with Bridges continues to thrive. David, you just talked about the people of Summit who are poor, and it made me think of a phrase that I used a lot last year, which is, "Our humanity is measured by our relationship with others, and if we ignore the needs of others, we risk losing that humanity." Well, I think it's important for all of you to know that our first candidate as part of this job readiness program, Stanley Sims, was such a fit for us in our culture and in the vision of the arboretum that he now works for us. In Stanley's own words, "I am so grateful for the opportunity, and I'm very happy here at Reeves Reed Arboretum. The staff came out to greet me on my first day and made me feel special. I planted a patch of flowers, and the next day, as I walked past them, I felt a true sense of belonging, like I might be part of a new family." Relationships, that's what we're about. So now, I go on to weaknesses. Our biggest need at the moment, and from my personal point of view, is accessibility. I don't know if you're aware, but in 2015, Cornell did a study for New Jersey, and they said that 10% of the population of New Jersey lives with mobility issues. If you go by our numbers, we have over 100,000 visitors annually, that's approximately 10,000 people who could not fully embrace Reeves Reed Arboretum and what we have to offer. The sight of a visitor struggling in a wheelchair, trying to navigate our grounds, going down the steep slope from our parking lot, and then winding up at a base of just grass and realizing they can't go anywhere, and then they turn around and try to go up, and the chair tips over, has happened three times since I've been there. It's a frustrating, angry-making, sad time. We share tears over this. It has been 30 years since the federal government enacted the Americans for Disabilities Act, and yet, I don't think we've fully embraced these concerns in our collective consciousness. To that end, Reeves Reed Arboretum has embarked on two-phased accessibility project that acknowledges and honors the historical legacy of the arboretum and meets the needs and standards set by visitors of all abilities. This holistic approach is partway there. We successfully achieved Phase One. We raised the money, we designed and executed Phase One, and we now have a fully safe, accessible drop-off area and outdoor classroom that's equipped with mobile tables that go from very low to wheelchair height. And then we designed and created planting boxes, unique to Reeves Reed Arboretum, that will enable anyone of any ability to use them. Our end-users, who we started with when we started on this project, have already come back to us and are using these new activities. Phase Two is ready to go. Again, it's fully designed. The only problem is money, and I guess that's my job. The opportunities that we face, Reeves Reed has expanded its footprint beyond our fences and into the schools. Thanks to a seed grant from the Junior League of Summit, Reeves Reed Arboretum's education department has expanded our square foot gardening program into a partnership with the Franklin School. Originally, this was supposed to be a one-year program, but thanks to a buy-in by the principal and the teachers of Franklin, this program will continue through 2019. In 2018, Reeves Reed Arboretum, along with CL Power and Grand Summit, initiated Local Action Global Impact, a program on climate change and sustainability. The first was a panel discussion headed by Kristy Todd Whitman and David Naido. It was quite wonderful. After that, it was a sustainable fashion show, and the last was a screening of the documentary Before the Flood by Fisher Stevens and Leonardo DiCaprio. Reeves Reed Arboretum is now the founding member of the Environmental Partners Program at Celgene. Celgene, as you probably know, is really deepening its green footprint in this community. And to their credit, they're reaching out to partners like us, like Greenwood Gardens, like Heartshorn, to really help push that along. So I'm looking forward to that. And along those lines, we hope that we will eventually have a Celgene member on our board, as well as Prudential, and as well as Novartis. Threats. There's always threats to nonprofits, and chief among them is fundraising. It's going to be a funky year. We're going to find out what's going to happen with everybody and the tax laws. But the more day-to-day threats are operational, deer infestation, adding staff, maintaining historic property, this comes with the job. This is what we do. It's how we live and how we make it better for everybody. I'm grateful to be able to work in this community, and I'm grateful to have your ears whenever I need them, and your support. You regularly demonstrate through your support that you care about our efforts every day, and the staff, and the trustees, and I don't tell you enough that it's important for us to have this relationship and have this relation, relationship just thrive. So it's a collective endeavor, and I appreciate all your efforts. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you very much, Frank.
Thank you.
As you know, I'm a big fan of the arboretum. I think it's an incredible jewel in our community, and I think one of the things that you did not mention is the partnerships that you have done vis-à-vis dance and music here in, in town. And I think, certainly under your leadership as executive director, I think you have really reached out much more into the community. I remember a long time ago, when I was on the environmental commission, people were like, "What, what's about Reeves Reed? What's going on with them?" And now, I think most people know exactly what's going on with Reeves Reed. With that, I'll open up for questions from members of council. Any members of the public have any questions?
I'll give you one. Steve?
You know, you talked about fundraising. Do you have any fundraising events that you want to shamelessly plug?
Well, interesting you should bring that up. Well, coming up in just a couple of weeks is Holiday House Tour, and one of the featured homes on the tour is the Bowman residence.
Talk about shameless.
And I don't mind twisting any of your arms for next year if you want to participate. We're looking for homes now. But also, one of the best and most fun things of this Holiday House Tour package is something called, well, we have two things, Cookies and Cocoa with Santa, where you get to take a picture with Santa at the arboretum as opposed to the mall. And then we have the adult version, That Night, it's vodka and latkes. And you don't have Santa, you have the fabulous jazz singer, Surreal Amay, who will be performing once again there, and we're just about 20 tickets away from selling out at this point, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to thank you. You guys are just amazing, and I love going to the arboretum, and I, I am kind of taken aback that only 200 and some members are from Summit.
Yeah, and we track this every year. It's quite amazing to me, too.
Well, people take advantage of it, because you've got 100,000 visitors a year, they're just not joining you as members.
Right. Yes, exactly right. Well, I think the 101,000, though, really, we draw upon over 61 surrounding communities when we, we track this, and it's not only Summit.
Oh, right.
It's quite a wide range.
Maybe if we had a sidewalk along Hobart from Springfield.
What a great idea! And then possibly a jitney from the train station.
There's that shuttle bus.
All right, well, thank you very much for this opportunity. Thanks for putting me on the agenda first.
You're welcome. Thank you, Frank. Appreciate it.
Say phone.
Okay. Then the next presentation we have is a report to council from the Housing Authority Chair, Colter Pollak.
Good evening. Colter Pollak, I am the chairperson for Summit Housing Authority. I live at 25 Nob Hill Drive, and anecdotally, have been here since 2002. And any questions that come up after I give a brief presentation? Hi, Mary.
Hi.
I will have my esteemed executive director.
called, well, we have two things, Cookies and Cocoa with Santa, where you get to take a picture with Santa at the Arboretum as opposed to the mall. And then we have the adult version that night. It's vodka and latkes. And you don't have Santa, you have the fabulous jazz singer Cyril Amay, who will be performing once again there. And we're just about 20 tickets away from selling out at this point, so.
Great, okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to thank you. You guys are just amazing, and I love going to the Arboretum. And I am kind of taken aback that only 200 and some members are from Summit.
Yeah, and we track this every year. It's quite amazing to me, too.
Well, people take advantage of it because you've got 100,000 visitors a year. They're just not joining you as members.
Right. Yes, exactly right. Well, I think the 100 and 1,000, though, really, we draw upon over 61 surrounding communities when we track this, and it's not only Summit.
Oh, right.
It's quite a wide range.
Maybe if we had a sidewalk along Hobart from Springfield.
What a great idea! And then possibly a jitney from the train station.
Here's that shuttle bus.
All right, well, thank you very much for this opportunity. Thanks for putting me on the agenda first.
You're welcome. Thank you, Frank. Appreciate it.
Save phone.
Okay. Then the next presentation we have is a report to council from the Housing Authority Chair, Colter Pollock.
Colter Pollock, I am the chairperson for Summit Housing Authority. I live at 25 Nob Hill Drive, and anecdotally have been here since 2002. And any questions that come up after I give a brief presentation? Hi, Mary.
Hi.
I will have my esteemed executive director jump in and help. You know, we're unique in the sense that we are an autonomous entity within the city, although we do have partnerships with you all. And we also, I think that, as Joe had said, this is unique for our authority in the state. We have a council liaison, which in general, I don't, I think we are the only authority with a council liaison?
I don't know if we are, but it's one of the few.
But which is a wonderful thing, because it allows for you all to get some regular feedback about what's going on with the authority and what we're doing. Just some baseline notes about what we do and what we have going on with our properties. Glenwood Place, we have three properties, actually. Glenwood has 40 units. Weaver Street has 30 units, and these are part of where our families live, and the units there are anywhere from one to four-person. And then Chestnut, which is 125 units, and those are one-to-two-bedroom that we offer. In terms of those partnerships that I mentioned, we are the acting agent for the City of Summit's affordable housing, so we do handle for you all the wait lists and the marketing of any units that come up as landlords bring them to us, and then we bring them to you for approval. We are also the coordinator for the Community Development Block Grants, and in that function, we handle the applications. We also deal with the public meetings that happen once a year, and then, of course, the submission of applications to you all for approval before they get sent to the county. In terms of the staffing, we have four full-time employees in our office. We have two full-time maintenance men who operate out of Weaver Street and Glenwood, and we have a part-time, what we call porter, who functions, really, his role is at Chestnut to make sure things are operating from a janitorial perspective. And then we have a part-time social worker who is provided through overlook. So in terms of full-time employees, it's six total. The wait lists are open for all of our properties. We have 321 applications for senior housing, and it's about a two-to-three-year wait. And with our family housing, we have 866 applications, and it's approximately seven to 10 years there. Some services that we provide additionally to the community within our, within the housing, basically. We have a congregant lunch program, and that is funded by the Department of Community Affairs. It's about a $35,000 grant that we receive. It is a pay, pay is what you can afford, so it's on a sliding scale. This is for our seniors at Chestnut. And we also operate a café, which is not new, but it's recently reopened. It's been reopened since September, and meals are provided there for breakfast and for dinner. They pay about $250 a month in rent. The seniors seem to love it because she's a very good cook, and they have access, especially as Joe and I were talking about, as the weather starts to turn and they have less of an inclination to get out there. We expect that to continue to provide them with some good meals. Joe also hosts Mother's Day, a tea event, a summer barbecue, a holiday luncheon, and then there's a Halloween, what we call Halloween giveaway. So these are all just events where Joe's team and those of us on the board who can attend can interact with the people within the properties. In terms of capital improvements that we've been working on, some things that we have finished are putting a new roof on Chestnut, which is the senior center. We've replaced windows and stairwell at Weaver Street, and we've converted 30 of our bathtubs at Chestnut into walk-in showers. That was funded in part by one of our grants. It came through the total bill, and that was 146,000, but we got 30,000 from the community development grants, so that was a nice little plus. Future capital improvements that we're looking to execute, we'd like to do the same thing at Glenwood Place in terms of the windows and the stairwells. We're also looking to add a new boiler and some wall units for heating. We are also, this is a, hopefully will be, it should be a cost-saving initiative, adding motion sensor LED lights at Chestnut. Currently, the lights are on 24/7, and obviously, if they're motion-activated, they'll only come on when somebody's in the stairwells. And yeah, we're going to try and do another 30 bathtub conversions to the walk-in showers.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, I want to open it up. Does anybody have questions? Let me start, and maybe it probably for Joe rather than Hugh Colter, but I'm happy to see who wants to answer. So I had the opportunity, actually, recently, for reasons that are obvious, to go walking around a fair amount of the town, including the fact that since being in Ward 1, I walked through Glenwood and Weaver, literally to every single apartment in both of those sets of units. Couple of things that I noticed in my walk was, I think, there's issues dealing with how they look outside. There's, it looks, there's rust on banisters, there needs to be painting, there needs to be maintenance of steps, there's cracks. The lighting, I think, in some of those places aren't that great. I mean, I walked in the evening, and some of the places is really hard to see. There's like yellow lighting, it's very hard to see anything there. What's the maintenance schedule? What's the painting schedule? What are we doing with lighting?
Where are we talking?
Glenwood and Weaver.
Well, on Glenwood Place.
Why don't you come up, Joe? Come on up.
Good evening, everybody. Glenwood is obviously our most challenging development and is the oldest, and we have a progressive plan in place now in order to do three major projects there. The staircases, if you might have noticed, some of them are rotting away, those steel staircases, just from age of salt, wind, weather, whatever it might be. The windows there are these slider windows that are really unproductive for air circulation. The air conditioners have to be cut into a metal panel that's underneath the window placement. Not a good idea. We had a similar situation like this at Weaver Street, and we were able to replace those windows there with double-hung windows. And we're going to do the same thing at Glenwood. That's within the next 12 months, we're hoping to do all of this. And then the heating units over at Glenwood are reaching a useful life, and they're individual heating boilers with baseboard heating. So those are the things that we're going to address immediately.
So I'm sorry to interrupt you. So with regard to the staircases at Glenwood, within the next 12 months, they're going to be replaced?
They're going to be replaced.
Okay.
Right, they're going to be replaced, the windows will be replaced, and the heating units will be replaced there. Those are the three major projects. Where we're going to partner again with the city in regards to using some of their rental rehabilitation monies. You may recall that about two years ago, we had the same partnership that we did over at Weaver Street, where we did a staircase in one particular building there that was rotting out, and we did new windows over there. And we partnered with the city. It was about $470,000 worth of improvements. The city allocated $300,000 worth of rental rehabilitation money. I've been working with Paul in order to put together another application, which I've submitted to him already, for $400,000 to use out of that funding for Glenwood Place. These three projects are going to come in at about $750,000. So the city will contribute 400, will pay off the rest, and then the city gets the allocation of being a COA credit for those, spending that particular monies, because all of our families are eligible under the COA guidelines. So it's a kind of a great partnership. It's a reimbursement program. The Housing Authority handles all the procurement, all the bidding process, all the construction oversight. We pay the contractor, and then the city reimburses us up to the $400,000 level.
And so, I'm sorry, so just to make sure, so Glenwood Place, you said for Weaver, you did one set of staircases, because this multiple apartment?
Right, the other ones were.
Right, right. No, but for Glenwood, you're doing all of them or just one?
We're going to have to do all of them.
Okay.
We have to do all of them, because those are more exposed, and some of them are, we've been welding them together to keep them going. They're safe at this point, but they're not going to last forever.
What about like painting and lighting at Weaver?
Well, the lighting has just been done. I don't know when the last time you were there.
I was there three weeks ago.
Well, then you didn't, you weren't there earlier when the lighting was much worse.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry to say, but part of our rehabilitation, we converted our funding mechanism at the Housing Authority. I don't want to belabor you too much with this, but.
That's okay. We're here.
We converted our funding mechanism, or there were a new program that HUD has called RAD, Rental Assistance Demonstration, and part of it was to do rehabilitation work once we got the projects approved. We had the application approved, we converted the first of the year. In the first-year component, we're doing the rehab work. The rehab work really entailed mostly LED-efficient lighting. So at Glenwood Place and at Weaver, we've already completed installing the exterior lighting.
Oh, okay.
So the old dim yellow lights that were there before are much improved at this point.
I'm pretty sure that I saw some yellow lights then.
So they shouldn't be there. Those were done, and that's, as we mentioned about, as Colter mentioned about, the interior lighting at Chestnut, that's part of that same component, to do LED sensor motion sensing.
Is there also, just sorry, Matt, let me just finish this. Is there also a schedule for painting? I mean, some of the places, I think if you brightened up the colors, they would look much nicer. Is there?
There is, but it's, very candidly, it's after the capital improvements are going to be completed, because the windows and the staircases and the heating units really take more priority than the painting at this point, because we're going to be coming through there with all types of equipment, in and out of people's apartments. Once those projects are completed, then we're going to be painting doors and stairwells and ceilings, and you may see the undercarriage at Weaver Street, some of those steel things need to be painted over. That's going to be after all those capital improvements are completed.
And then my last question before I'll turn it over to other folks. I noticed that some folks, it seemed, at least on the Weaver Street, that maybe they were using, where they were, you know, the apartment was on the ground floor, they were having a little garden or try to kind of quasi-garden space. Is it possible for people to do that? I mean, like, it would be really good, I would imagine, if people had a little, can they get a little area to garden if they wanted to? Is that offered to them?
It's available to them. I don't know that a lot of people take advantage of it. Glenwood has more of the issue where people have all their patio stuff and everything out in those little alcove areas, and they don't have very much storage space over there. And to be very candid with you, sometimes it can be unsightly, and I don't really take such a heavy hand on that situation, because they really have no place else to put their stuff.
Right.
And when the weather's nice and you want to put out a patio table or a grill or something like that, they're storing it underneath the stairwells.
There's no place for a storage locker.
There is no room over there for that. That's pretty tight, that site, very tight. At Weaver, it's a little different, because they do have individual storage units that they can store stuff in, but Glenwood doesn't have that. It wasn't constructed that way.
Thank you. I just had a follow-up question, comment about the lighting at Glenwood. I was there first weekend in November. In the daytime, I had, in the daytime, I had to use my flashlight to get up the stairs. So I don't know if you redid the lights, and is it that they're going out again, or is it that perhaps residents or people are putting them out? Well, what could we do about that? It's felt, I felt very, it's like, from a tripping perspective, very unsafe going up the stairs.
Well, they're on sensors, so the sensor should come on if it's, you know, if it's something that we have to look at again. The sensors are set to come on at a certain dusk time.
No, I mean, this was in the daytime.
If it's in the daytime and it's a cloudy, they should come on.
It's like 11 in the morning.
No, they should come on, so it could be definitely an issue that we have to look at.
They're definitely not on.
Well, then if they're not on, that's wrong, because they should be.
It was, to me, that's the number-one issue, the lighting issue, because it's dangerous, I feel, and there's a lot of little kids.
The lighting's really a lot better than it used to be, but still, if it's not coming on, that's a problem.
But that seems like a low bar, right? So we can't, we can't go with, "This was really bad, and now it's better than bad."
Well, we did LED lighting, the best LED lighting that we could get there, yeah.
No, I just think maybe it's not on, or it's not going on. So maybe the sensors aren't the way to, every time I've, my own personal, I know it works for a lot of people, when I've taken all the sensor lights out of my house and replaced them with switches, because they don't do what I want them to do. And not that I'm a genius, but I think.
I don't know that I would particularly do switches, but I could look at the sensors, for sure.
Well, yeah, whatever it is, I mean, maybe there needs to be some lighting on all the time, is what I'm saying, because in the daytime, it's equally dark on some of those stairwells.
I have, it's a few things, Joe. How are you?
I'm good, thank you, Mary.
You have seven to 10-year, Colter set a seven to 10-year wait for the family units.
Family units.
Is that any different, that time period, for Summit residents versus non-residents?
Summit residents have a preference.
Correct. And what is the wait list for Summit residents in the family units?
That would be their waiting period.
Seven to 10 for Summit residents.
That's the waiting period, because we gauge it based on the preferences. Someone who's from out of town who's on the waiting list has a very difficult time to ever get in.
Got it, okay. And then, just out, how often does the Housing Authority Board meet?
The Board meets monthly.
And do they meet sometimes in the premises, at the various locations?
They do. They meet generally here in the Whitman Room, is like their main shop.
Right.
They meet twice a year at the Gallo Building, once a year at Weaver Street, and once a year at Glenwood Place.
And residents are given a lot of notice so that they can come to meetings if they like.
Notice is published, residents are entitled to come, invited.
Great, good. And then, you said, I think you said you have, for the 125 units at the Gallo Building at the Chestnut Street, that you have one part-time maintenance guy. Does that seem like enough to you?
Yeah, it's enough.
Really?
It's enough, yeah.
I have heard lots of things, lots of residents who have said that they don't think so. So I'm just throwing it out there. Garbage, that kind of stuff. I've spent time with some of the seniors recently, in the last year, and with good groups of them, large groups of them, and that seems to be the overwhelming unanimous, not unanimous, not a fair word, the overwhelming concern, there's just not enough maintenance with garbage, with cleaning the floors, with whatever.
Well, we think it's enough at this point. I mean, it's been working out for us. We've been, you know, emptying compactors twice a day because we had some issues there. The gentleman, we hired a new gentleman about a year and a half ago.
Okay.
And very candidly, I will say, the gentleman that we had to let go was really a neat freak and probably did a lot heavier cleaning, but had other issues.
Right.
So there was a reason for us to release him.
Sure.
And this new gentleman has been fine, and I think it's working out pretty good.
But fine, not so much a neat freak. Maybe we should look for someone who's better than fine.
Well, maybe. Maybe we could look for that.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Anybody else?
Mary, just to say, we, our meeting's tomorrow for the month of November, so we'll talk about these issues. I think we're meeting in the Whitman?
We're meeting here tomorrow at 7:00.
Not at the Gallo Center, because I was told by some of the residents over there that they think, they think it's at the Gallo Center tomorrow.
No, no, it's here.
Okay. Can you maybe put out a notice or something over there?
We did.
Because I saw a bunch of them yesterday for about an hour and a half, and they all thought that the meeting was over there tomorrow night.
No, the December meeting is traditionally over there.
All right. Well, you know what?
The November meeting is here.
Okay, there's some confusion. Perhaps you can have someone on your staff put a, like a sign over.
We did flyers Friday to say that it was over, because we had to change the date.
That's right. They thought it was on the 28th, and said they turned it, they switched it, they told me that it was 28th to the 20th.
What's the 20th?
The 25 or so that I saw yesterday think that, no, Saturday, I mean, think that it's there tomorrow night.
Oh, it's not, no, it's not there. It's here.
So perhaps someone can put a notice up there in the tomorrow morning and let them know.
We can do something tomorrow morning, sure.
Sure, okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
The more participation, the better.
So you're going to have a meeting at the Gallo Building in December. You had one already at Chestnut, and you had one over?
Well, the Gallo Building is Chestnut.
I'm sorry, that's Chestnut.
That's okay.
You already had one at Glenwood, and you had one at Weaver, both of them?
Correct. That's correct. We've had that already this year. We had one at Chestnut, I think it was the March meeting, and then we generally had the December meeting there.
Usually, it's about two, two to three residents will show up.
Right. What's the date of the December meeting?
19th.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Anybody else? Any questions from members of the public? That's it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Okay. Moving on. We have one resolution, and then we're going to go to public comments, and so we have a Finance and Personnel Resolution 6035.
All right. For Beth, I will take it away. Yes, this resolution is to amend the 2018 to 2023 capital plan and budget. This resolution will allow us to amend the capital budget in connection with a bond ordinance that will be introduced later in this meeting. I would like to move this resolution at this time.
Second. Any questions, comments from members of council? Any comments, questions from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a roll call vote, yeah, so, Nicole.
Well done, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat, I was just testing, just see.
Rosemary left me some notes, thank goodness. Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Mr. McTirren?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President Naido?
Aye.
Okay, now we're, okay. Now, as I said, the delayed city administrators' report, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for providing me the opportunity to just brief you and the elected officials, as well as the public, on the city's pre-event planning for last week's snow event and some of the storm operations and communications that we conducted during that time. So just going back a week ago, November 12th, we began to monitor forecast, forecasting, which had identified a storm event brewing and its projection for, to occur on Thursday, November 15th. Tuesday and Wednesday, storm forecasts varied widely by forecasting agencies. The National Weather Service was projecting one to three inches of wet snow, sleet and rain, to occur starting early afternoon on Thursday with temperatures rising during the day and changing to all rain by evening, and that was as of Tuesday and Wednesday. Indeed, there were varying forecasts on the form of the initial preparation expected from wet snow to rain. Then on Wednesday, November 14th, Summit's Department of Public Works began final preparation for the forecasted event. This included final preparations of spreaders on single axle trucks, mounting and testing of plows on smaller trucks, and preloading of de-icing materials and spreaders and brine applicators. Large plows of single axle trucks were mounted on Thursday morning as the forecast developed and further after the scheduled dial truck bulkie waste collection was completed. Again, the forecast varied up until mid-morning of the day of the storm, with the only consistent detail being storm timing. Due to pavement temperatures and the forecast of rain, a full-scale brining operation was not used as it would have rendered it ineffective and a waste of resources. The colder surfaces of the upper decks and of the parking garages and various public sidewalk areas were pre-treated, pre-treated with Thursday morning. Initial roadway salting operation commenced at 1:00 PM in anticipation of the imminent start of precipitation. And as forecast, snow began approximately around 1:15 on Thursday and then rapidly intensified. Trucks continued salting operations and then dropped plows, not trousers, by 3:00 PM as accumulation occurred. Sidewalk operations commenced by 1:00 PM as well, quickly accumulating heavy wet snow, packed easily into ice on roadways with traffic. The rapidly deteriorating conditions resulted in numerous vehicular accidents and spinouts. This created gridlocks on the roads as vehicles ill-equipped for snow travel lost traction on inclines and at intersections. Accidents occurred on the Morris Avenue Bridge, on Broad Street, at the intersection of Passaic Avenue and Constantine, Springfield Avenue by Argyle, to name several. For approximately two hours, two New Jersey transit buses were stuck on Broad Avenue and John Street, which required police traffic control. This combined with the influx of vehicles detouring off the highways and arterial routes and the exodus of students, school staff and employees from large corporations in the city may travel within our municipality nearly impossible as truck routes became impassable. Primary streets gridlocked, causing snow response vehicles to become immobilized in traffic. Secondary streets remained somewhat gridlock-free where DPW crews focused their attention in the areas that could be traversed, plowed and treated. At approximately 3:15 PM, calls were placed to the county for immediate assistance of the county roads. The county indicated that their crews, their crews were stuck in gridlock as well, all over the county. By 3:30, a request was made to the Joint Dispatch Center to cease recalls for DPW staff at various locations as roads were impassable. At such time, the Summit Police Department began summoning DPW directly to troubled spots to assist as best as they could. This was also the conclusion of the normal working day for DPW and City Shift One that stayed on until midnight. Many employees stayed at DPW and insisted as any attempt to return home would have been futile. Snow continued throughout the evening commute, converting to sleet around 9:00 PM. At this time, an ease in traffic occurred and DPW crews were finally able to get ahead of the storm. Cleanup operations continued until approximately 5:00 AM the next day. Temperatures did not rise as much as forecasted overnight Thursday and into Friday morning. And at 6:00 AM Friday morning, additional snow began to fall and approximately an inch had coated the road services before crews were summoned again to salt high priority areas such as hills and parking lots. Work to clear walking and school routes continued until mid-morning, at which time major operations had ceased. A more detailed report will be provided to my office from Public Works, but we estimate about 400 man-hours of labor were utilized above regular working days with 42 contracted service plow hours. We approximated 150 tons of salt, 4,000 gallons of brine, 3,000 gallons of liquid calcium chloride and 750 pounds of bagged calcium carbure applied to roadways, parking lots and sidewalk areas. From the Police Department operations side, at the start of it and during the storm, the Police Department sent out numerous NICSOL alerts about road conditions and closures, specifically in that time, key time period of 4:30 to 6:00, 6:00 PM Thursday night. Various advisory messages were sent out through NICSOL, which also posted on the city Facebook and Twitter links about the road conditions, the hazardous conditions, as well as just anybody out there traveling with extreme caution and just some other messages to not report slippery conditions because people were calling in to just let us know that it was slippery and dangerous out there, which we knew. But it was tying up and gathering up the dispatch operations. And so during the night and during the day and night, numerous vehicles, as I stated, were stuck and left unattended roadside, which our officers had to spend time calling in and trying to track down these car owners. Patrol had numerous requests from city, county, DPW assistants, which their response was delayed due to the officer's inability to traverse the roads efficiently and safely. Up until midnight, Summit PD was still working to free up certain pockets of gridlock in the city. Total number of accidents from 2:00 PM to midnight on that Thursday were eight, no injuries. Total number of service calls were 73, which was inclusive of the motor vehicle accidents. I know the police chief had followed up with, in a letter to the editor on Friday, which spoke to, you know, reminding our citizens about readiness guidelines for the winter season. And then just city communications, we were Wednesday and Thursday with Facebook and Twitter messages from JCPN L, as well as any winter advisory we were receiving from National Forecasting about that event. And then we even attached snow guidelines, which can be found on our website, what property owners should do, ordinance rules, how the city plows, snow removal priorities and garbage pickup, to name a few. What's not in here is addressing the issue of when, when snow starts to accumulate a lot more than forecasted and people start to panic on how to handle that situation, which I think was really the primary issue of everybody going into a panic and getting in their car and trying to drive at the same time. So we continued our communications through Friday morning, which was just more or less trying to encourage people to stay off the road, the conditions, and as well as just the public school posts about closures and so forth and any New Jersey transit potential delays. And that was pretty much it from our side. There may be some discussion around this topic, but before we get to that, I just want to thank everyone for their patience. And we know the incredible frustration many of our residents had to face to get home, some of which even some of our employees had experienced. And we did release them unfortunately around the same time everybody else left. But I also want to just, this is one of those weeks where we get together with our families and reflect on our, what we have in our lives. And I can speak for myself, I feel very fortunate and I want to thank everyone for, you know, serving what we do every day and with our city staff. And it's a pleasure to work with everyone that I do as closely as I do, who's sitting out in the audience tonight, the elected officials, and thank you for allowing me to serve the city of Summit. And we should also just take the moment to, you know, think about those who are a little less fortunate than we are in our city. So, thank you, and then I'll open up any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Michael, thank you. I think, you know, we all recognize that obviously this snowy event and the conditions on the road wasn't unique to Summit, it was not even unique to New Jersey. I mean, you see the news reports and I can know from friends who live in Connecticut and New York that they experienced similar problems on the roads that they lived in as far as delays. But it's always good to get a debrief about what happened, so people understand what steps were taken. I know there's officials from the school district here and certainly welcome to speak about the thoughts from the school district's perspective of what happened. But I think always it's also good in a debrief to talk about kind of lessons learned and things that we would want to maybe not necessarily have to change completely, but improve upon or do something. Maybe, Michael, if you have, do you have any thoughts on that before?
Yeah, and something we discussed the next day, which was around just sort of communication, the communication loop with all major employers in town, the school district, which we have that communication. But it did provoke the thought of perhaps closing a loop that I don't think is there. Communicating with, you know, our largest employer or employer in the city is Celgene. And I did have a conversation with the president of Overlook Medical that day. But I also want to sit down our communications officer, I feel that we could probably have a better sort, you know, loop of communication during these events, real time and how that's playing out. So other employers and anybody else we can think of that should be in that loop of what's going on and what people, what actions people are taking, and especially with releasing their employees, knowing that maybe there's a, there's a way we can do this, not that we can mandate anybody staying in their offices or leaving at a certain time. But I think anywhere in that communication loop we can, we can strengthen, I think that's one of the lessons learned.
I certainly would agree. I think that coordination or communication between hospital, the schools, our major employers in town and the city is critical because once people get on the road, it's the city's issue. People can let people go, they can let students go, and then their responsibility in some ways ends. And that's where ours begins. And I think it's incumbent upon them to understand that they have to coordinate because it doesn't do anybody any good if one decides to just go ahead and act as if one is in a bubble or in isolation with others.
Right.
So with that, any other questions, comments from members of council? Oh, any member, oh, Matt, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council President. There's a couple of things that I'd like to bring up and just discuss head-on. First of all, I think that our, thanks so much for our city employees and our, and our police and DPW, especially for all the effort they put into it. The storm to me, I studied this storm pretty intensely because I was fortunate enough to be at home and able to go on social media and see what people were saying. And they were, a lot of people were very upset with this storm. But, so I did a lot of research about the whole area we live in and about the way the storm went. And first of all, I do know that it was a really, a bunch of factors that came together. And I think some of the stuff is new technologies like Waze, which caused a lot of out-of-town commuters to search for alternate routes through our city, ended up with such a gridlock that nobody could go anywhere and no plows could go anywhere to plow anything. So people couldn't go anywhere, the plows couldn't go anywhere, and then the problems just compiled from that. But I do have one question I want to ask specifically, and Paul, you and I already discussed this. So I know the answer, but I'd love for you to tell us in a bit more detail. And I know you mentioned about pre-brining. I had heard from a few constituents that brought it up that, I believe that what they believed is that if we would have pre-brined the streets, meaning put the stuff down before the snow started happening, I believe that they thought that the snow would have then just, you know, bounced right off the roads and we wouldn't have had this problem at all. So I wonder if you could talk about that.
Come on up, Paul.
Thank you. You, Council President, it's a great question. We were well-prepared for the storm DPW. We elected not to brine based on the forecast. So they originally forecasted one to three inches and then changing to rain. Our protocol is not to brine when it's going to rain.
And why is that, sir?
Because the brine just washes off of the roadways. I can tell you that there were many DOT highways that were brined prior to the storm, the day before the storm, Route 80, Route 287, Route 78, they were all gridlocked. It did not change the condition of the roadways. There was a heavy volume of traffic that created the gridlock, but more so the way the storm hit and the way the storm was forecasted. So originally, one to three, converting to rain by five o'clock. By 10:00 that morning Thursday, they changed the forecast to eight inches in our area from one to three. What it did was create a reaction by folks who overreacted and everyone decided that it was time to seek shelter and leave their work areas and try to get home. That's what created what you saw. If brine was put down on Summit streets prior to this storm, the conditions wouldn't have changed whatsoever because we were not able to get out and plow those roads when we needed to. You heard the report by Administrator Rogers, we were out salting at 1:00. The storm started at 1:15, so we were out attacking that already prior to it starting to snow. I like to just share with you our protocol when it comes to, because I've heard other comments about the plowing operation. We begin to plow when there's about three inches on the ground. And the reason for that is, and most communities do, it's not like your house where you go out, there's two inches, you get a snow blower and start blowing snow. Three inches is where it's safe enough to use plows on a road where you're not destroying the equipment. So what had happened this storm, as you know, it started snowing at 1:15, we were out there salting. By the time it hit about three inches for us to start plowing, the roads were gridlocked already. Because the intensity of the storm created probably close to one and a half inches an hour of snowfall. The roads were gridlocked, we weren't able to get there. Our biggest concern and what we were looking to make sure that we were able to keep open was Broad Street and Morris Avenue for the hospital. We were unable to get there. The county was unable to get trucks up to Summit to do any of their roads. So a lot of the primary streets in Summit, which you heard in the administrator's report, River Road, Constantine, Morris, Broad, Springfield, those are county roads that they weren't able to get to. We directed our efforts to the county roads to try to get them cleared because we knew our colleagues down in the county couldn't make it. We were unable to even get to those roads because of the gridlock. It was mentioned that, and you're very accurate, there were, there was an effort to get folks off of the main arteries, Route 78 and Route 24, and Waze was taking them and Google Maps and whatever technology they use today off of the highways onto secondary streets and towns, not only Summit. That's what created the issues that we had. So to answer your question, I know it was a long-winded answer. I wouldn't have changed the way we attacked it. I wouldn't have put brine down because it was only going to wash away based on the forecast. And if there is rain in the forecast, we don't apply brine. It's an anti-icing measure that's used during snow and ice storms. If they're calling for rain, what that'll do is just wash it down, drain and into the streams.
Thank you, Mr. Caskey.
Paul, can I just ask, maybe I misheard, did you say at 10:00 the forecast had changed to, to eight inches of snow?
It wasn't universal, though. It wasn't every forecaster.
No, it wasn't every.
Not every forecaster was saying that, it was not universal.
Wait, let me.
So I tracked no one, no one changed the forecast?
Was that information passed on to the school district? Or did the school district contact you about it?
Not me.
Does the school district contact you about the conditions on the road?
Does, does the school district contact you about the conditions on the road at any point in time, as a, as a protocol? Do they do that?
So, yes, that is a protocol where we do communicate. However, when I was appointed to the director position as the superintendent, I did communicate with the superintendent of schools over the years. Being appointed to the directorship, my deputy director actually has communication through the, through the city to the superintendent of schools.
Do you know if he communicated that information that at 10:00 the forecast had changed to eight inches of snow?
If the deputy director?
Yeah.
There was a, I believe, a text email that did alert of the change in condition.
And that was sent to the, to the superintendent, the school superintendent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have one weather ser, sorry?
No, go ahead.
Do we have one weather service that we rely on for the, for the information when we decide what to do? Well, let me back up and say that I think, and I thank you for that great explanation, and I, and I'm pleased with the way you handled it. And also, I just want to say one other thing about our police department, who I know came out and directed traffic and did everything they could do, and I don't know if you, you want to talk about that, Chief Weck, but I want to talk about Chief Weck himself, who went above and beyond to, to make sure that one of our buses full of schoolchildren got home and, and worked on that for hours into the evening. So, thank you for that, chief, I appreciate that. And, but I would, I was thinking, and the reason I'm bringing these up is because I'm the public safety chair, and I would like to hear a bit about the police response. And then, the other, the other thing is, I'm just thinking about what we could do, you know, going forward in terms of codifying our communication rather than sort of, it seems like there's ways we've always done it, but I just think with the chance of storms getting worse and more frequent these days and with navigation technology going to definitely screw us up, you know, going to bring in a lot of outside traffic into our city again next time, perhaps what we could do is come up with a recommendation for how to, you know, a very specific set of protocols to do moving forward.
Okay. Did, did you want the chief to say, or did?
I don't know, if, if you feel like telling, talking about.
Let me just say, I have not said thank you, Paul, to you and your crew, right? And I think that's on behalf of all of council and the mayor and the city because I think we all understand. I mean, I, I was out there the next morning at like 5:00, and I saw your crews working at that point in time, and I know they've been working all night long. And so, it's a tough job, it's a hard call to make, what to do, what not to do. It's easier to armchair second guess when you're doing it afterwards, we all get that. But as, as Matt said correctly, you know, we have to think about protocols going forward, and that's the reason for my questions about who, how we're doing with communications. The key here is communications because I, I think Councilman Gould is absolutely right. We may not have this exact set of storms conditions the next time, we'll have a different set of storm conditions. But technology has made it possible that people who would always have stayed on that highway, would never have thought of leaving that highway, now know they can take this back road to that back road to that back road, and suddenly you're getting everybody looking at those back roads. That changes the equation for all of us, and we just have to recognize that's, that's the fact of life that we're dealing with. I mean, I saw your crews, they were stuck in traffic, they were just sitting there going, wait a second, I can't do anything here. So, thank you to you, and I know the police chief and his guys were out there doing really great work as well. And so, but I agree with, with Councilman Gould, we need to think of how we get this protocol, think through, I think Administrator Rogers is making the same point, communicating better, going out there with our employers, with, with the school district, with the city, because as I said before, once people get on the road, your responsibilities, no longer those employers' responsibilities, right? So.
Thank you, Council President. No, I, I echo what Council President Naidoo said, just to give thanks to your hard-working crew. I mean, it's dangerous, too. These guys go out there in snow, bad weather. I know every, a lot of people were out in the bad weather this time around, but they do that at night when everyone else is safe in their, their beds. So, thanks to you, all your crew, and as well as the police and all our first responders. It's a, it gets nasty out there. I, I would just suggest, we haven't, in our reorganized council next year, we have an administration committee that will deal with communications as well.
Yes.
And that could be a good place to start where we can start to think about a holistic approach, how we do this, because, and I, I'm happy that we have some representatives from the school here. It certainly has to include that because, you know, one thing is we, I agree, we, you know, technology where we have people from using Waze or what have you are coming through here, but, you know, we also have hundreds and hundreds of parents who are trying to get their kids home in, in bad weather, too, and, and that's, we, we should be able to help with that through proper communication as well. But I also think there, we should talk a little bit also about education because I know one thing that certainly hampers our ability to clear the streets is when people just get out of their car and, and walk away. And I know the police were dealing with a lot of that, and I think that that should be folded in and we should think about a way to communicate, just don't do it. All you're going to do is make it worse for everybody. And, and again, we, you can't, the plows don't work, you can't tow these cars because they can't get there, it's just a disaster. So, there's a lot of different layers to this, but I think, hopefully, maybe next year we can come up with something where we can think about these sort of daytime events, middle-of-the-week type events, because they, they seem to have the most problematic outcomes when, when they happen.
Thank you, thank you. Marjorie, please.
I'd like to echo what, what the others have said about the great work that everyone in the city has done in response to the storm. I did have a couple of questions for you, Chief Weck, about sort of the, there seemed to be on social media a lot of confusion about, you know, could you leave cars in lots? Could you leave cars on the street, you know, and all the, will you be ticketed? Will you be towed?
Right.
You know, what if your car is disabled? And I think there's a lot of, I, I know you, you guys were trying to keep ahead of that, but I think with the dispatch, it didn't always get communicated, and I'm wondering if that's something we ought to be looking at in the future.
City President?
Absolutely.
There was a lot of frustration, especially on Facebook. Unfortunately, if it's on Facebook, it's true, right?
Of course.
And we know that's not true. So, there was a lot of frustration. People were leaving their vehicles on the street, or they didn't want to put them in the driveway, so they would call and ask for permission during any snow. We, and while the dispatchers were probably taking the brunt, they had a lot of calls coming in.
Of course.
So, I am going to defend them a little bit. They're not police officers. I know that is a big misconception that the gentlemen and ladies on the other end of the phone, 0051 number, are police officers, because we'll hear, you're a police officer, you're a police, that is a separate entity. That's the Mountain Valley Emergency Case Center. We, the city, when I say we, pay them to dispatch for us as well as they dispatch for New Providence and Milburn. So, they're going by our orders, which is, we have an ordinance, if there's any kind of snowfall, you cannot leave your car on the street for plowing, for various reasons. If you noticed on Friday, it was very nice out, everything starts to melt, those grates can't get plowed if there's cars all over the street, and then you can have flooding, and then if the, the temperature drops, then now you have black ice and things like that. And then the main thing is obviously for emergency vehicles. So, the officers, and I'm going to commend the men and women of the Summit Police Department and as well as DPW, they were working in that condition. I mean, yes, that's what they're paid for. At times, they were frustrated because they, they couldn't get where they had to, to get. I equated it when I was talking with Administrator Rogers that night, it was like a big knot where you just have to keep working on it, kind of loosening it up, and, and they would like clear Broad Street so they could move cars off of Maple and Summit, what have you, and just to slowly kind of undo the knot. So, it was tedious, and, and I called Sergeant Byrne at like 12:00, we spoke, and they were still clearing gridlock. So, the frustration really does come down, people want to just leave their cars, they're frustrated, they can't get home, you know, I'm, I'm three blocks away, I'll just park it and walk. And then they will do the right thing and they'll call dispatch, but we tell them it's going to get ticketed and/or towed if we have to move that vehicle for emergency purposes. So, it's something that they, they have to learn, and I know some people, you reached out to the mayor and everybody else, saying, you know, I, I just don't get why I can't just leave my car there overnight. It's cleanup, we, we have to, you know, we have to do what we have to do. So, I want to thank everyone for their patience because it was a trying time for everybody, everybody involved, so.
And I didn't mean that at all as a criticism, just as a clarification.
No, no, not at all, no. It's more of an educational.
Yes.
Because people don't understand, like, I know there was one comment, someone said, you know, it's really not, you know, I know that, you know, Chief Weck and others are working on things, but it's the mayor and the chief that put that into place, that we can't park overnight, or, you know, or during storms. I don't, I've only been chief eight years, so, and I think that kind of been before me, so, but it's all about emergency.
What about the, what about the parking lots? If your car is in the parking lot already and you say, I'm going to walk home rather than keep it and keep it overnight, or what's the status of that?
I mean, I would assume Rita will back me, leave it there instead of getting on the roadway because we don't want to get hurt, and we'll work that out later.
Right.
I mean, you know, we're not saying you can't leave a car in a parking lot, I would rather you stay there, and whether you walk home, I mean, walking home also is dangerous, you have cars sliding and what have you. Shelter in place is, if you can stay at work, stay at work. And, and all you have to do is call and say, I'm just leaving my car there. And listen, I think my officers, our officers are worried about other things than issuing a ticket in a snowstorm to a car that's parked in a parking lot, right?
I, I think that's, that's kind of some of the miscommunication that happens in social media. People get like, oh, I'm going to get it, or they think that they're going to get something happen, and I think people sometimes lose sense of common sense. What is really going to, are these people really going to sit around giving me a ticket inside a parking?
Right. We have a couple of other things we have to take care of before that.
Okay.
Did you have another one?
No, that's good, thank you.
Matt?
Sorry, I'd like to just say one more thing on the dispatch center. I also know that the dispatch center always answers Summit Police, if I'm correct, even if it's a fire, even if the people want the fire department?
We can go online.
So, sometimes they say Summit Fire, Summit Police when they're, when people really want the fire? Is that not correct?
Well, I, I, we, if I can jump in, we discussed this through you, President. We discussed this in public safety. I'm going to have a conversation with Director Ruff, possibly saying Summit Emergency Center or just something different that's, so they don't think it's police, but because people then, once they hear Summit Police, they think they're talking to a police officer.
Fair enough.
But that's, which is fair, I mean, I would, too.
Right.
But I, I think to your point, they may be calling for whether it's medical or, or fire service. So, we can have the discussion with the director of maybe a better tagline when they answer the phones.
Yeah, and I think that could clear up a lot if that happens.
Thank you. Okay.
Very briefly, I just wanted to throw my thanks to you and to Paul, to all the guys at DPW. It was a long day and a long night and a lot of frustration, and a confluence of factors from the weather and the, and the forecasting was not as accurate as it could have been. And it, it is, the, the Waze piece does, is different, it's something that's added in the last couple of years. So, I think the idea of having the administrative committee look at this, but just take into consideration and get the, the input from our professionals, because for the most part, the way the city and the schools have worked over the years has been effective.
Correct.
So, we've got a few things technology-wise that are, that are, are changing the equation and need to be considered, but it was a unique situation.
It was, and I still think the city of Summit is, is very lucky to have the men and women that.
We do.
Work, whether DPW, police, fire, EMS, council.
And, and the maintenance at that, Angela Palumbo and the work that all your guys did to clear out the schools, that's, was huge. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I know we have representatives from the school board, I don't know if you want to say anything, you don't have to, but if you, if you do, you're more than welcome, but you don't have to, it's okay.
I would just say.
Come, come, come on up.
Thank you, Council President. My name is Matt Lockum, the Director of Human Resources for the public schools. We just want to thank everyone also and the partnership, and as you said, Angelo's folks did a great job. You know, as everybody said tonight, the forecast was all over the place. Certainly, an early closing is not something you can kind of call on a dime at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock after the snow starts because of childcare reasons and things like that. Also, you know, we want to recognize, too, our staff who, many of them stayed at the schools well into the evening with our students, taking care of them and keeping them safe as our parents really struggled to pick up the kids. And so, it was a valiant effort all the way around, and again, we appreciate your partnership and the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Anybody else from, and now we'll just open up for general public comments on anything that's not on the, the agenda? Yes, please, come on up, David.
I'm Paul Protocol here. I know it's.
Yeah, of course.
David Hughes, 21 Pearl Street, former city clerk. I want to speak about the snow. Whatever you do in these situations, there's going to be complaint. For 40 years, I would get the phone calls, would come to the mayor's office. Why not? Why not? Why not? So, be, be careful to over, overreact because when you're going to solve one problem, you're going to create another. If somebody is allowed to leave a car on the street, you know what the complaint's going to be the next day to Paul? My street didn't get plowed. In front of my house, there's a big mound of snow. You can't win. So, keep that in mind. You know, you, everybody here and there does the best they can, but you can't overreact to every situation. And lastly, Summit is on the top of the hill, gets colder here faster. One of the ladies that worked for me lived in Westfield, there would be no snow in Westfield, she'd get up here, there'd be two inches. So, we have a additional situation beyond this storm that was very hard to predict and came about so quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, anybody else? Okay, with that, I'll close public comments. We're going to move on to ordinances for hearing, and I see Councilwoman Little has joined us. Come on up. Just in time. And if anyone wants to lead now, also, it's free to do so, of course. You can stay and hear the rest. Okay. Give her a second to settle in here.
You got the low chair, too. I know. You've got the very low chair.
She's much taller than this in real life.
Do you have chairs on her so she gets the slow, the lowest chair? Really, Matt, really?
Matt did it. Yeah?
I thought she wasn't coming.
Last person sitting.
Okay. Whenever you're ready, Ben. Okay, so, we have an, first we have ordinances for hearing. There's one ordinance, Finance and Personnel, 18-3177. Deputy Clerk, would you please read the ordinance for hearing?
Bond ordinance providing for the local units allocable share of capital improvement projects for the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties by and in the city of Summit and the County of Union, State of New Jersey, the local unit appropriating $1,175,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $1,175,000 bond or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Thank you. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. As discussed at the last council meeting, this is a bond ordinance to provide for capital improvements for the joint meeting. And for those listening at home who weren't present for the last meeting, the joint meeting is basically shared services among a number of municipalities to take care of the disposal of wastewater and sewer issues. So, very important. These capital improvements were, were presented to the council by the joint meeting over the summer, so they were not able to be included in the regular capital budget process. We amended the capital budget the last meeting, and this ordinance and the, these improvements are going to be funded with a loan through the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank at a low cost to the, for the financing. So, I would ask that this ordinance be open for hearing.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments, questions from members of the public? Further discussion? Okay, consider this hearing closed. Moving on for ordinances for final consideration, Madam Clerk, Deputy Clerk, would you read 18-3177?
Bond ordinance providing for the local units allocable share of capital improvement projects for the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties by and in the city of Summit and the County of Union, State of New Jersey, appropriating the $1,175,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $1,175,000 bond or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. As we just discussed and had a hearing on this ordinance, I now ask that it be moved for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little? Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTirren?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President Naido?
Aye.
Okay. We are now moving on. For those who are keeping track, ordinances for introduction. We have one ordinance for introduction. It's Finance and Personnel, 5976. Deputy Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Bond ordinance appropriating $1,050,000 and authorizing the issuance of $999,000 bond or notes of the city for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit and the County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance is to cover the costs for two capital projects that were not included in the original 2018 budget because the need for the funds was not known at that time. As we discussed in the last meeting when we were amending the budget for the joint meeting project, this isn't something that we do lightly. We take very seriously, including all costs that we can in the capital budgets, that we can, you know, have a good understanding of the need for financing and to, you know, know what we're spending. However, these two projects have arisen and the timing is such that we want to make an amendment and go forward with that now instead of waiting for the next budget process. So I'll discuss them one at a time. The first project is for the resurfacing of the town pool at the Summit Aquatic Center. This project was brought to council's attention during the last budget process, but at that time, it was felt that the resurfacing could possibly wait another season. And we had done an evaluation and we were gonna be looking at it for this next budget process. Unfortunately, because of a series of events and just the way things go, sometimes the pool surface deteriorated much more quickly than was expected over the summer. And when the pool was drained at the end of the summer, there was quite a bit of damage. There was, chunks of the concrete surface had come loose so that water was getting into the pool surface and there was a lot more deterioration. Some of that was due to weather. The pool cover that covers the pool during the winter became damaged because of the tremendous amount of snow and ice that we had last winter, so more debris got in the pool and some of it is just what happened. We could wait until the next budget process to look at this again, but it would mean that the pool could not be resurfaced before the start of the summer season, which would be detrimental for a number of reasons. One, the damage to the pool would, you know, prevent the full use of the pool by our residents. And if we wait on this project for a full another season, there would be more damage, it would be much more costly to repair. So we are doing an amendment to the capital budget and asking for the costs to repair the pool so that we can complete that for the summer season. Project one. The second part of the ordinance is for funds to, to cover the design documents for the fire department project, which has been discussed at a number of council meetings. This project has come up in conjunction with the Broad Street redevelopment project and it looks like we are gonna go forward with doing the design documents to move the fire department and build a new fire department in another area of town so that, in conjunction with the whole redevelopment project. Again, that those, this whole process wasn't at a point where we could go forward during the budget process last year, but if we wait until the, this coming budget process, it's gonna put us several months delay in moving forward with the redevelopment and in looking forward with, going forward with the fire department project. So again, because of the timing, we are doing an amendment and asking to go forward with those design documents at this time.
Thank you.
So I would like to ask that this ordinance be open for hearing.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTirren?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President Naido?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We will consider it at the next council meeting. Now, moving on to resolutions, we have one from Buildings and Grounds, Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution pursuant to discussion at the closed session, we will be tabling the appointment of the Economic Development Advisory Committee Chair. We will, however, be appointing the Transfer Station Task Force Chair and I enthusiastically move to appoint Adam Zucker, Chair of the Transfer Station Task Force.
Second. Okay. Any comments, questions from members of council? Comments, questions from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Finance and Personnel, we have one resolution, 6049. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. This is a resolution for transfer of appropriations and I'm going to explain to you in one minute. I apologize as I walked into the meeting. This is to cover a surplus in the operating's account and to transfer funds into another operating account, another series of operating accounts. This is a normal bookkeeping procedure that happens here at the end of the year as we look at different accounts that have surpluses and have deficits to, you know, just make sure that we are covering those amounts. So I would ask that this resolution be approved.
Second.
Okay. Any comments, questions from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Further discussion? I'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTirren?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President Naido?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Works, 6010. Councilman Bowman?
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number one, number 6010 is a requesting an agreement with the Union County to permit the installation of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the intersection of Morris and Elm Street. This intersection is heavily traveled with commuters heading to Summit and downtown as well as the middle school visitors. Yes, there are select times where there is a crossing guard, however, after-school activities plus commuters utilize this intersection when darkness graces our town. This beacon will be a solar beacon. There is a new requirement by the county that requires that we request this installation and then once they get approved, we will again have another resolution to authorize installation. Makes the process a little bit longer. Anyhow, I move we accept this resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any comments? Matt?
I love these RRFBs, as everyone on the Safety Committee knows, and so I hope we can get this in pretty fast. I guess, as fast as we can.
We have one ready to be installed.
Right.
So it's just a matter of
So we've done our part, but the county has to approve. Does that also go for the one we're putting in at Morris and Aubrey as well that we've already approved and discussed at this meeting? Anyone, you know?
I would think
That's grandfather.
That's grandfather. So that can go in as soon as our, our
That's where that one's coming from is it didn't fit there for Morris now.
Got it.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I just urge us to get it, to get them in as fast as we can. I think they're a huge help to pedestrian safety.
That they are.
Mike?
I would echo that. That's a crazy corner, particularly in the morning and probably people don't remember, a few years ago, a crossing guard actually got hit by a car while doing their job there. So the crossing guards are great, but even they need a little help, I think, in a crazy corner like that. So this is a, this is a very, very good thing and, you know, can't get it soon enough.
I would echo. Let me ask just one question, though. I know that we put similar thing at Norwood and DeForest, right? That's where we have that flashing beacon lightly. But that sometimes works, sometimes it doesn't. Are we gonna have issue with this one?
We hope that the solar will, will work. It is close enough that we have power that if this does not function as a solar powered beacon should, we can convert it to
Regular.
Regular source.
Got it. Furthermore, Council President, is our understanding that that one at Norwood and DeForest is functioning properly at this time? If, if we hear that it's not, we will be on it. I've checked it myself a few times. I believe it's functioning properly.
Okay, good. Good, very good. Okay.
I wanted to add to Councilman Gould's, or I guess Councilman McTirren's comment about that intersection. It has improved since we have limited the parking that, or the drop-off along the middle school. So kudos, and we've gotten a lot of comments about that, that just alleviate some of the congestion of, of that area on dropout in particular.
But I think this is, this is a very needed signal. Any comments from members of the public? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to General Services, and we have a series of General Services resolutions. So Councilwoman Ogden is going to be very busy for the rest of the evening. And I think we're gonna bundle the first two, and so I will leave that to now Councilwoman Ogden to take the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. Yes, I would like to bundle Resolution 6022 and 6053. The first resolution is a resolution to authorize holiday parking courtesy notices. In an effort to foster holiday spirit in the downtown, General Services would like to authorize the issuance of these holiday courtesy notices instead of tickets. These would say something like, "Happy holidays, friendly reminder, you've gone over your parking limit." Shoppers who are repeat offenders with the help of our automated license readers would get a ticket second time that they parked overtime. The time period for handing out these courtesy cards would be from Saturday, December 1st to Monday night, December 24th. At this time, I would like to move this resolution to hand out the holiday courtesy cards to shoppers.
Second.
Okay, second resolution. This we will bring up for discussion. This resolution was to authorize free Saturday parking, Saturday, December 1st, 8th, 15th, and 22nd, 2018, in our 90-minute spaces only. As per our discussion last council meeting, we went back to SDI to come up with what we thought was a good compromise for the holiday parking with the Saturday free parking in the 90-minute spaces. But as you all saw, SDI did not agree to that, so at this time, I open up this resolution for discussion and move this.
I second.
So that, obviously, this was also discussed at the last council meeting and it was discussed last year, and I hope, I will, I will start off by saying, I hope this is the last time we're gonna discuss it just in front of the holiday. I would expect that next year, we are going to deal with this issue upfront in the spring before the budgeting, before SDI's budget is set, so we don't have this issue ever again. We're gonna figure this out because having this issue come up days or weeks before the holiday period is an unnecessary pressure because we kind of all, I think, know that Christmas occurs every year. And so I don't think that's a surprise to anybody. So with that said, what we, I'll frame, I'll frame what my thoughts are and, and what we, what other folks can then chime in and figure out where we go from here, right? So just so the folks who are hearing us understand, what are we talking about? We're talking about whether or not there should be some kind of period of time when there is free parking in the 90-minute meters in the downtown in front of the holidays in order to make it easier for people to shop. Counterveiling issue, of course, is one of turnover and making sure that there's spaces because it's great to have people come in and have a free spot, but if there's no spot to be gotten, that's not much of a use to have it being free. So that's, that's the two pressures that are going on. The way I look at this, I guess, is I can support, I think, the holiday courtesy cards, I guess, because that's, to me, is like, okay, well, if you park over your time limit, fine, get a notice, and I think that's a nice thing to say to people, hey, look, you're not getting your ticket immediately. The second issue of whether it's these days about the spacing, my preference, I will say to you, because of just thinking about where we are with our town vis-à-vis other towns who have same issues about dealing with turnover and dealing with parking constrictions, is that a lot of towns offer free parking for a period of time. Some of them are longer. They go on from Thanksgiving to Christmas or even past Christmas to New Year's. Some of them permanently have anyway free parking, but their conditions are different, obviously, because we have, our downtown is right adjacent to the train station, which makes it very convenient for people who are commuters to use our downtown parking and then go on a train and never use anything in the downtown. That being all said, my preference would be for us to, as we have this discussion, is to think about having basically like two weeks, similar to kind of what we did last year, of, of having free parking for the 90 minutes, and then if a person goes ahead and violates, then I guess the first time they get a courtesy card and the next time they get a ticket. And, and we would enforce it in order to create that turnover situation. But that's mine and maybe nobody else shares it, but I'm trying to figure out a way. And I know there's an issue with SDI having skin in the game. And I thought that this issue had been resolved when we had the SDI budget because I thought this year's budget had included money for participating in some way with the city. And the reason the skin in the game is important, and I think Councilman McTirren, and when I saw the video of the last meeting, spoke to it, I think, correctly, which is, it has, this has value. And we understand that SDI or the downtown businesses contribute in other ways to the city. We understand that they pay taxes. But 81% of the taxes in this town are paid by residents. 19% is paid by commercial and businesses. They use the same roads, they use the same services, they use the same everything as everybody else. I get that they don't use the schools, but there are plenty of residents that don't use the schools. And we don't give them and say, "Hey, listen, you, your kids are out of school, you don't have to pay as much in taxes." That's part of living in a community. Don't get out of it because you get the benefits of everything else as well. You get the fire department, the police department, the roads. That's what allows people to get to your businesses. And so to tell us in an email that we get, we have all these other things that we are contributing as if we, the city, do not contribute towards your ability to have a sustainable business does not make any sense to me. And I will also say that we completely respect the fact of having a strong and vibrant downtown with many things that this council, previous councils have done to help the downtown. And so I would respectfully say that the SDI board need to think about contributing, not on the basis of, oh, it's only for promotion or it's only for this and this is the limitation, but just generally, here, we are part of a community, we're gonna kick in some money because that's what a community does. It shares things. It shares the benefits and it shares the obligations. So that's my perspective towards this, and I think we could have the SDI board reconsider, and I would strongly advise that they do reconsider, but I would also strongly advise that we give them two weeks free parking under the terms that I apply. And I'll open it up. Anybody? Beth?
Thank you, Council President. I'm, I'm gonna take a, a different point of view. I sit on the SDI board, I sit on S-PAC, and I sit on General Services. So I spend a lot of my time that I volunteer towards the city, talking about parking and thinking about parking and listening to people tell me what they think about parking. And I will say that everyone involved on the city end and at SDI and on S-PAC is working to help the downtown. And so we've had a lot of discussion in council meetings as well about our parking situation, and we have installed the, the new parking kiosk and a new parking fee structure in our downtown. And it was not done to make the city money, it was not done to destroy the downtown, it was not done for a lot of the reasons that have been posed that, that maybe that's why council did it. Council did it in conjunction with SDI and S-PAC and all these other, all this input from different people to help and support the downtown. We have a very unique situation in Summit in that we have, we have a train station that is direct line into the city, which is a great benefit most of the time. And we have a very vibrant and busy downtown. That gives us the situation that parking is in high demand. And the kiosks and the fee structure were very carefully thought out to maximize the benefit to the downtown businesses, to encourage turnover, to set the fee at a reasonable rate that would encourage people to use the, the spaces for the purposes that they were meant. The 90-minute spaces for quick errands, going in and, and getting your shopping done and the longer DeForest lots where you can park up to five hours for longer shopping trips. It was very carefully thought out. There was a lot of work that went into it and there was a lot of input from all the different parties as to how to maximize our parking for the benefit of our downtown businesses. And so to then come back and say that we're gonna just throw that out and do the two weeks weeks of free parking for the holidays to benefit the businesses seems counterproductive to me, in going back on that. And it seems that, that, that two-week period may work, not work to the benefit of downtown businesses and encourage, again, employees using those spots, commuters using those spots, and other people using those spots who aren't here to shop in our downtown. I think the combination that was proposed by General Services, where we did the courtesy tickets, if you went over your time limit on the street parking, and the, you know, the, the Saturday free parking in the downtown, is a great compromise, and I think we should stick with that. That's what was discussed in General Services, and that was what was proposed to SDI.
Anyone else? Mary?
I would just like to echo Councilwoman Little's comments, because I support that 100%. We have been spending an incredibly long time talking about what is, would be, we feel would be the best, have the best interest of the downtown at heart, and the kiosks have, it's been proven, they've talked to us, readers come back to us, turnover is happening, and that's a good thing. You want as many people being able to park and go in and shop and, and be a part of the downtown, and that's why we felt that the four Saturdays would be a nice compromise, because, yes, we have free bagged on the, on those Saturdays, so everybody come in, you have free, because people do take advantage of the free parking. And, well, I'm not quite done yet, it goes over, and, you know, this is a way to say we, we completely understand, you know, the giving back at the holiday season, but felt that during the week, keeping the kiosks, keeping the turnover, keeping people being able to park is a priority. So that's why we thought that this was a good compromise.
Anybody else? Marjorie?
I recognize all the hard work that Mary and Beth have done, and all the S-PAC board and Rita, and, you know, everyone who's been thinking and working so hard on parking. And I think, you know, I think we have seen progress in terms of turnover, but I guess my thinking is, for those two weeks in December, just, you know, if that's what the other communities in the area are doing, and that's what our residents want, I mean, our residents have some value and some say in this as well, and I'm willing to, you know, I didn't hear anything terrible happening last year, so I'm willing to give it a try again this year with the understanding that next year, we try to work it out so SDI does contribute to that cost. So the combination of the courtesy tickets and the, and the two weeks rather than the four Saturdays, to me, seems like a, a good compromise for this year.
Anybody else? Before I ask for public comments, and I see Nancy Adams, maybe, maybe it would help in the discussion to have Nancy also, Nancy, come on up, and, and let's start talking here.
Good evening, Council President, Mayor, Council members. Well, I feel like, I have my council meeting tomorrow night. I feel like I've already lived through the snow conversation that I will undoubtedly live through again tomorrow evening, so thanks for the preview. So I, I just, I'm here as a representative of SDI, obviously, on my SDI board, I don't have a vote on this, but I will tell you what I've spoken with them about and their comments last time this was brought up. So just very basically, it's common practice, as you know, for municipalities to offer free parking for shoppers in their downtown district. Westfield does, I think, December 5th, no, 15th through January 2nd, and it's all lots, all parking spaces, and they also have a commuter train station. South Orange does the same, and, and I could go on Red Bank, all the places I've worked, basically. And so this is something that's just sort of expected. More importantly, as an elected official myself, if I were sitting in your seats, I would look at it from my residents' perspective, and my residents' perspective, especially with the rollout, while SDI agreed with the kiosks and the doubling the 90-minute meter rates in prime parking spaces, it didn't roll out as well as might be expected or, or wanted in August, and, and I'm sure you all remember the backlash, so I think this would go a long way to have, toward your residents, and since the bulk of the people who come downtown are residents of Summit, it would be a nice holiday present for them to, to have free parking. So I think the enforcement is how you, once you're no longer charging for parking in those spaces, enforcement is the way to ensure turnover. Since they'll be enforcing any way where you're still charging, they can still enforce at the spots that are free as well. And that, we find in other municipalities, that it's, it's really all about enforcement, even if they're not accepting payment for parking. So license plate recognition makes that very easy, relatively easy. Also, they wanted to just talk a little bit, I just wanted to let you know that SDI board does consider itself a skin-in-the-game organization. The estimates a couple of years ago were 2.6 million from the business community toward schools and 1.2 million toward the general fund in Summit. So just to convey their view is that they do contribute as well as the assessment for the special improvement district. So I'm happy to answer any questions with what I've been told by my board as to what to convey to you. A couple of business owners did say that the free parking made a big difference for them. Last year, they saw an increase, happier customers, happier residents, so just people just having a little bit less stress and trying to get back to their space. So I'm happy to answer any questions I can.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, anybody with questions? Mike?
Yeah, thanks for coming and speaking, Nancy. I know two weeks ago, this kind of came up, and we're like, well, what does SDI think? So I think it's important that SDI is engaged in the discussion and in the process.
Yep.
Because it, obviously, you're one of the stakeholders, not the only stakeholder in this entire discussion, but certainly an important one. Just a question about the, your idea about this marketing idea. So you've allocated $3,000 in your budget, what is that going to go for?
That would be for developing and running ads, whether in local publications, online, and buying the ad space. Some of you may have seen the Urban Agenda, we had a nice full-page ad in there, which is not for, about parking. So it would be mostly locally based and pushed out through social media and, and online tap into the main places that Summit residents know about.
And was that, that 3,000, was that, is that the same that was allocated for last year to advertise for this program?
Yeah, we spent, I don't know the number off the top of my head, I want to say about 2,400 for valet, the advertising and all that went into valet parking.
Valet, which...
Mostly. And the free parking. The free parking, if it's given, will go in all of our advertising for the holidays, but we would do separate advertising for free parking as well.
Okay, so, all right, so, so, since we're not contemplating the, the valet this year, just to be clear.
Right.
All that $3,000, then, would be spent on advertising for the 90-minute meters being free for whatever period of time it's decided upon?
Correct. I'm not authorized by the board to have any of the money they authorize for advertising free parking to go towards supplementing the cost of free parking.
I'm sorry, so you're saying that...
That what they, what they budget...
So just so we're clear, right? So what you're saying is suppose your advertising costs are 2,100 instead of 3,000, that difference of the 900 is not going to go towards the parking authority, it's just whatever the cost of the advertising is, that's what, the total, up to a max of 3,000? Steve, please.
I, I guess, Nancy, we had this conversation, we talked about this last year, about SDI contributing, and, and like David said, we kind of thought it was in the budget. It seems as though if we approve it this year, and I think Council President and I do said, we need to have a, a plan for next year, is SDI willing to make a contribution in the 2019 budget?
I don't know the answer to that. I can tell you from the minutes of last year's meeting, when they appropriated the money, each board member was asked to vote whether or not they would be in favor of reimbursing the city at all for the free parking. Nine members were not in favor of reimbursing the city.
Nine?
Nine. And it's a 14-member board, and that includes four of you, so...
Guess where they were?
Yeah. So, yeah, that, I mean, and our budget, just to be clear, I would like to get this discussed sooner rather than later for 2019. It can go on our board agenda for, it will be on for the, our next board meeting, which is next Wednesday morning, and it can follow up and be talked about again in December. And the importance of that for me is, I've pushed to get, our budget is going to be finalized in January, because I don't like waiting that long. That way, you have it in plenty of time, and in theory, we can function.
Well, I'm happy to hear that again, because I, I think, unfortunately, this is, I, I've been on council for five years, and I think we're always talking about free parking in November.
Mm-hmm.
It makes no sense, as Council President and I do said. This should happen in April, or, or the latest around Labor Day.
Yeah, if it would, if it, I think the biggest issue is, is the cost-sharing part that, that ends up coming in November. Traditionally, an organization like SDI would request free parking, you know, like in October, like the letter went out, as just kind of, and cost-sharing is not always part of the conversation. So it's more about free parking for the holidays kind of thing, and, and I think it's more frustrating in this because of this, this is what thing needs to be settled between SDI and, and the council.
And just one last question. So the SDI, just to be specific, would like, what period of free parking?
I think we talked about December. I don't know the dates now. What did I, oh, wait, I have my letter.
[inaudible].
Yeah, 9th through the 25th, which would be a total of 12 revenue days if the city's not enforcing on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Thank you.
I think it's 13 days we enforce on Christmas Eve, right?
We should think about enforcing on Christmas Eve, but, uh... Ticket Santa Claus. Let me, let me, let me, since we've had a discussion, and I, and it's getting, the hour is getting late, and we still have to get through the rest of the agenda, and do we have further, I mean, Nancy's standing up, do we have further questions for her? I don't want to just have her standing up there, because I think we can just wrap up where our collective heads are. Okay? Okay. Anybody else that would like to speak about this issue, about these two resolutions, or just generally about downtown parking, the holiday time, and, and what we've been discussing? Yes? No? Okay, great. Okay, further discussion among members of council. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Beth, please.
I just, I just, the only thing I want to add to my previous comment, conversation is that I, it is a nice gesture to do free parking, but it does have a cost. So I do want to point out, and we did discuss that last time, the, the free parking piece for the, the 12 days that were, or 13 days that were discussed is around $17,000. So although we can talk about this in the abstract and say that it's a nice thing to do, does it move the needle? I don't know. I mean, the whole parking structure is designed to encourage turnover, to free up those spaces so that customers can come into town and use the downtown services, use the downtown businesses. I don't know that free parking moves the needle or helps the downtown businesses in that way, since the whole parking structure is already set up to encourage maximum turnover and maximum use of our parking spaces downtown, and it does cost the city a significant amount of money. The fact that SDI, you know, I'm troubled by the fact that it was almost unanimous vote not to contribute anything to this, because you'd think that if the downtown businesses really were seeing increased sales and increased traffic in their stores because of the free parking, that it would be something valuable to them, that they would contribute something or be willing to contribute something towards the free parking, which does cost the city. So that's my last thought.
Thank you. Just so, I'm, I'm clear, I guess this contribution issue, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm just not clear in my head. I thought, am I hearing correctly that for 2018, that SDI will in fact contribute towards the promotion of free parking? Is that correct? Okay. So just so it's clear, they are willing to contribute, it's just that they're not willing to contribute directly into...
Our costs.
Parking authorities. Our costs. They're willing to contribute towards a promotion of it, but not, and one can argue whether or not that's towards us or for their own benefit, but one can...
Possibly I misunderstood Nancy Adams when she spoke about that, but I thought that there was discussion, you were, you were reading from the minutes, and there was discussion of contributing towards the city's costs for the parking, and that was unanimously, or...
Correct.
That was shot, that was voted down.
That's correct.
So it was, it was discussed during the last budget process, and SDI declined to, declined to make a contribution to offset the parking costs.
Exactly.
But they did approve advertising for the free parking.
Correct. Correct. But just so we're clear as to what they're willing to pay and what they're not willing to pay, so they're willing to pay something towards the overall concept of parking during the holiday period, it just happens to be on the promotional side, and the question could be, well, the city may not have wanted to promote it anyway, and it wouldn't, so you're not getting anything benefit from the city's perspective. On the other hand, the city may have wanted to promote it. Nancy, come on up, yeah?
Sure. Just something I wanted to, when we, when we do meet, and I, while we're discussing this for the 2019 budget, for SDI's budget, I'd ask that in that conversation, the parking utilities budget be thought about too, as to projecting out that the loss of revenue during a free parking period and figuring, you know, the expenses the same way we all do our budgets, you know, just trying to, so maybe that becomes an annual thing that we don't have to have this discussion every year, and it just becomes sort of a policy. That would be the goal.
I, I think, I think that is the aim, to get to a policy, and I know that the Director of Parking Services will say to you, and she has in front of her a memo that we all have as far as what her calculated expenses are, but that's, that, that, we know what that is.
Right.
So that, we're all aware of it.
That's...
It's not necessary to repeat that. I guess where I come down, in contrast to Councilwoman Little, is I, I look at it as, how are we being perceived as a town out there, to the general public and to our own residents? If everywhere else, people are having free parking for a period of time, I get what people are saying, I completely hear the hard work that people have done and thought through this issue, and I understand that. I'm just struggling how we explain to our residents, saying, every other town around us has free parking for this period of time, and we've decided that we're going to do this hybrid, and I guess it's a hybrid. It's not that we're not going to give any free parking, we are going to give. It would be for, for a couple of Saturdays, I mean, that are critical period of time in December, I get that. I just think that we've ended up in this situation, unfortunately, at this last minute to try to figure this out. So, but, but I'll leave it, you know, you guys know where, kind of where my head is as far as this thing. Mike?
I just have one other question for Rita before I make some comments. One thing, obviously, we're concerned about is with free parking, that it gets abused, and particularly amongst like, you know, shoppers who just hop from one place to another. I know with our license plate recognition thing, we can track that, but can, can we track the fact that people would, could move, like an employee could move from one, one zone that's 90-minute meters to another zone that's 90-minute and back? Is, is it sophisticated enough to, yes, please, to, to, to track that sort of thing?
Rita McDanny, Parking Services Manager. Yes, that's one of the jewels of the software. The officer will put the cameras on, will ride down the street, enter the zone. Currently on our ordinance books, we have something that's called no meter feeding. What meter feeding is, for years, they would go from one meter space and move up one if it was available, or move around the block. So the 90-minute zone is all the 90-minute streets, and basically, the ordinance reads that they only get 90 minutes within a 24-hour period. If they continue to move, whether it's on, let's say, Bank Street, and then they go over to Beechwood, that's within the 90-minute zone. So that, because we do it by license plate, that license plate is tracked throughout the downtown. So yes, we do give tickets for meter feeding. I just caution you, whatever your decision will be, I will follow. The key issue during the, especially with the train station, once the car is parked, the car is parked. So if someone goes in the city, the car is parked there all day. We will ticket them after the 90 minutes or an hour, you know, almost two hours, but the issue is, is that space therefore gets no turnover. We do have an hour free in the de forest lots, you know, and that's all year long. We give the Thanksgiving weekend free shopper parking, but yes, back to your original question, the ALPR software does that. However, I just know from my history being here, the courtesy cards are more welcome by residents. Everyone would like free parking all the time, but they would rather get the courtesy card instead of a parking ticket. And we gave out more tickets last year than we have in years during those two weeks, because people were abusing the time, even though it was free. So I just wanted to, in a double...
But Rita, to your point, you asked this, you said we should be cognizant of the fact that people could just park the car and go into the city, but that's just the condition right now, that's at any point in time. How does that change?
No, I just, I think during the holiday time, yes, we just see it more that the, an employee will park there all day, because they say, oh, it's free, you know, and we get a ticket. They don't mind the tickets. Even people go in the city, they'll take the $25 ticket. You want turnover, and if at least you're charging... You want turnover and if at least you're charging for that space, they're more likely to stay within 90 minutes to two hours. That's just the experience.
Okay. I mean, I'm not quite sure I understand.
Well.
Okay. Mike, did you want to finish your thoughts?
Yeah. You know, I, I know we talked a lot about this, we've been talking about this for years and, and we, and, and so we did come to something with, with Thanksgiving holidays. We, we used to have this discussion about Thanksgiving too, every year. And as Rita pointed out, you know, the city agreed to that and I think she's talking about this is, costs 17 grand as well, whatever. But, but again, I've always said this, it's not about the, the money, it's about, because we're supposed to run our parking as a utility to, to, to the best of our knowledge, it's a scarce resource and we have to service all our stakeholders, which is, business is one of them, our employers, employees are another, you know, shoppers are another, residents, et cetera. But that being said, you know, I think it was, that at the time was considered, all right, we're going to make a very good gesture, we're going to make this permanent because, you know, Black Friday, Small Business Saturday, you know, these are things, very targeted promotion ideas that can help small businesses, particularly in a very difficult business environment that it's still in for retail. This, I, I've always said, you know, I, I, that, that term skin in the game, I almost think is not kind of the right idea. It, it really is, and I think Councilman Naidoo said it, and I've said it before, it's, when you can, when you ask for something and it's just for free, just give it to you. You know, my kids do that all the time and, you know, you, you gotta say, well, what is it worth? Like, is, it is, do you gotta, it, to, to have value means that at some level, you'd be able to, you'd want to pay something for it. And the idea of some sort of nominal payment was to say, all right, let's think about this. We ask the city every year for free parking. What is it worth to us? And my, it sounds to me like, it certainly doesn't sound like, if, if I was sitting on the SDI bar, I voted no all the time, it doesn't sound like it, they don't really, it's not worth that much unless they feel that council's just going to roll over and give a free parking again. And, and maybe that is the right calculation that they're making, but that's disturbing in another level too. So, look, I'm happy that they, you know, when, when we talk about contributing, I know there's, there's $3,000 in the budget. You know, I, I could look at that as, as a contribution, you know, they're going to spend money on this thing and to make it successful. Last year's valet program, we spent money on it, it was a disaster. Nobody used it. It was a complete waste of money. So, we, we hired all these people, spent all this money. I know SDI advertised for it and, do you remember how many people we had using it?
A handful.
A handful.
There really wasn't a whole lot.
A handful.
Probably the number of people in this room right now.
Right.
Yeah, it wasn't a whole lot.
So, I, I guess, look, I'm, I'm, given the fact that they have, SDI has a commitment to spend money to promote this, makes me happy. It, it does mean at, at some level, there's something going on in their heads where they think that there's, you know, it's worth making this work. I would hate to say that if they just asked for it and then did nothing to promote it, it would be a problem. And this is one of the things I always talk about. We have free parking 12 months a year. We don't have free parking just around the holidays. We have it 12 months a year and I wish that would get promoted more and more. And I'd love to see some money in the SDI budget to tell everybody that every time, every day. So, I, I, I guess, I would be willing to, to view the two weeks around this, given the fact that they are willing to put, put money in, but I, I would love to see as a follow-up, how much you spent on the advertising, what it was about, how effective it was, who you thought you reached around it? Because I, I, I would hate to say I'd be, love to do this and then I find out SDI spent $800 on advertising for this. That would disturb me.
I, I agree completely with, with Councilman McTiernan. I would love to see how much is spent afterwards because it, it's one thing to promise $3,000, it's another thing what is delivered. Let me, let me, Councilman Gould or Bowman, you guys haven't spoken, I don't want to call on you, it's not school, I don't want to, but I don't want to not have you a chance to speak also, so, want to make sure that everybody gets a chance.
Well, you know, you know, no, no, I can throw something out, you know? I mean, first off, we, we have free parking on Saturdays at the two commuter lots that, that oftentimes goes, doesn't get publicized and oftentimes I can find a spot very easily. And, and if we're looking to, to draw people down there, you know, I've shared with people that they've said, you know, I can't find a parking spot. I'm like, well, the commuter lot on Saturday is, is right there and it's, it's empty right now because I, my car is there. Regarding this, I would like to, to Councilman McTiernan's comment is, to see, is there an increase in revenue that goes through there? I mean, that's what we're trying to, to get, whether it's foot traffic is one thing, but we want to see an increase in, in sales. And you don't have to give exact numbers, but I'd like to sit there and say, revenue generated in the area in, during this timeframe was X as compared to a similar 12-week or 12-day period in November or, or to that, or before school starts or something to that effect. Because we do, we want to bring people down there. We want to see the restaurants full. We want to see that every day. I, I guess I can agree to it in that they, they put the, the advertising out there, but I want to see the results of the advertising.
Okay. Councilman Gould.
But how do you see the results if we've been doing the free parking every year for the past X years and, I don't, I don't know, we don't have anything to compare it against?
I, you know, I would like just compare it to a, a similar timeframe in November, you know, or maybe it's back to school, some big event, maybe it's the, the end of August or, which we know isn't a good time because August is, is empty.
We have, we have
Rita has
Yeah, Rita, is there something?
I just want to clarify, we have one this year, one last year, first year.
Right. Understood.
Oh, thank you Rita.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I think the, the question though, because the hour is getting
So then we could compare it.
Longer and I, and I don't want to belabor this, people have to, we have to make a decision. Okay. So, the question for us is, we have a resolution, first for dealing with, with courtesy notices and then we have a second resolution dealing with holiday parking that some of us, I think, I heard at least, I think, Councilman McTiernan, maybe Councilwoman Fox, myself, at least I think, are willing to amend to change that to the two weeks of free parking. I don't know if that has majority support, does not have majority support, but maybe the best way to do this is to go through each resolution and take a vote and then see where we end up. Okay? Is that fine? Somebody else has a better suggestion? I'm more than willing, we're having a discussion here.
My, my question is then will I move the second one as written or amended? How you would like it amended? That's
Well, I think, I think what we would do is let's get through the first one first and then, or maybe, maybe it makes sense to explain what I, at least I think, and then our legal counsel can advise me if we get this right. So, the idea would be we would vote on the, the first one first.
Yes.
And then the second one, we would vote as is. Should we vote on it as is or should we vote on the amendment to it first?
No, I'd vote it on as is.
Okay, as is.
Right.
And then if that fails?
Then you can vote
Vote on an amended version.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So, and, and before I close off discussion, anybody else have anything else to say? I don't want to shut someone off in the last minute. Yes? Everybody's good? Okay. Great. Okay. So, on the first one, 6022, just, Mary, please.
Sure. This resolution is to authorize holiday parking courtesy notices.
Thank you.
I'd move this resolution.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Okay. That passes. Second one. Mary, please.
Okay. This resolution 6053 is to authorize free Saturday parking, December 1st, 8th, 15th and 22nd, in our 90-minute spaces only. I would like to move this resolution at this time. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Actually, I think we have, uh
I was aye.
Okay, that was aye. Aye.
Aye.
Majority. Okay? I will propose the amendment although I, I think I know where it's going to go, but just for the record, just so it's clear, because I think I'll propose an amendment to this to expand, I guess, from these four to, to have a two-week period encompassing these dates. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. And it's, uh, so just so it's clear, the nays are Councilwoman Little, Gould, Ogden, Bowman and the yeas are McTiernan, Fox and myself. Okay, so it fails and these two resolutions as proposed pass. Okay? Moving on. General Services, number three, Mary.
Okay. This resolution 6011 is to authorize the contract execution of the Broad Street Lot Valet Parking Concession to Parking Services Plus Incorporated in the amount of $11,247.50 per month. This resolution is to award a one-year contract to Parking Services Plus for valet parking in the Broad Street East Lot, beginning January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. This amount should not exceed 1,003, 134,970. The city went out for request proposals since the current provider wanted to change payment arrangements of their current contract. And if the city was unwilling to change that payment contract, then they would not renew our contract with us, with us. Our city attorney has concluded that this change is substantial and a major one, therefore the city needs to go out for new proposals for valet services. As of November 1st, which was the deadline, only one request was provided and that is with Parking Services Plus. So, this resolution is to award Parking Services Plus that one-year contract. I believe it's important at this time to continue this valet service as it helps to provide as much parking as we can in that lot, considering major changes may be happening in the future. With this proposed development of Broad Street, we want to make sure Parking Services offers as many spaces as we can to our customers. So, at this time, I'd like to move this resolution to award Parking Services Plus one-year-long contract.
My second.
Any comments from members of council? Margaret.
Thank you, Council President. Could you just clarify, does, do the fees go to the city then and we just pay a monthly charge? How does the fee structure work?
That, that, yes, they do go to the city.
So, what does that mean as far as the cost to the city? Are we, is this more or less expensive or does it end up being about a wash?
Rita, you want to address that?
Come on up.
I believe it was pretty comparable.
On the previous contract, we were paying them about anywhere from $8,000 to $9,000 a month. They felt based upon their overhead and their expenses, that wasn't enough to keep the contract going. So, when you go out to RFP, it's just basically, you can't put in a minimum and maximum, it's what would the monthly fee be? So, they go up about $3,000 a month.
So, we've always paid it monthly? We've never had a different kind of arrangement? Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Questions or comments from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, number four.
Okay. This resolution 6012 is to approve the one-year contract extension and increase number of participants with dynamic ride-sharing program with Lyft Incorporated, not to exceed 275,000 per contract year with the expectation not to exceed 250,000. This resolution is to approve this extension and increase the number of participants to 300. It has proven to be successful and Parking Services recommends approving a one-year extension option from December 4th to December 3rd, 2019, again, increasing participants. So, at this time, I'd like to move this resolution to award the extension contract to Lyft.
My second.
Thank you. Comments from members of council? Wait, wait.
I just looked at the top of the resolution, the dates are what? 17 through 18, 18 through 19.
Okay, so, Mary, you'll just make that amendment, right?
Sure. I'm sorry, Rita, what did you do?
I don't see that.
First paragraph in the resolution.
Okay.
Is that what I called it?
Okay. I'm confused. I think the resolution's
It is correct, right?
Yeah.
I think so. Okay.
I'm sorry. Councilman Gould, did you have a comment or question?
Yes, I have a question. A question for you, Council President. One point you spoke about, the, at one point I remember you did an analysis about this Lyft program and how much a parking garage would cost us versus how much this costs us. Does this still make, do you remember much of that and can you refresh my
I, I remember and, and there are plenty more people more qualified than I around this place to tell, but I think there's like, what, 30, 30-plus thousand dollars per parking space? That's how much a parking space costs. I do think this is the, and, 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 Michael, do you want to correct me?
Sure.
Am I wrong? Am I overestimating?
Councilman Gould, now I know you didn't go to my presentation. Because I, I gave a presentation, we were featured as a, it was a creativity showcase in municipal service solutions. So, I gave a analysis and it was just speaking to people that really have the opportunity to hear the ongoing discussions over the last couple of years. The parking lot option, we originally looked at two different options. It was if we acquired an acre lot, which is what you would need to accommodate 100 parking spaces. And we looked at what, some comparable sales of really at this point quarter-acre sites in the downtown area, more or less a conservative estimate to acquire an acre land in the CRBD or very close to the train station would be approximately $7 million. And so, we looked at that, what the cost over, for setup costs, debt, debt service, operating, operation and maintenance costs, and that probably goes up to about 9.5 million. And so, then we looked at, well, it would be offset by revenue and if we had 80% utilization, we did, you know, 1.54 million. So, you're looking at almost nearly $8 million of cost. That would be to acquire a surface lot. Then we looked at the structure and we said, okay, we just built a 100 parking space structure, which is not what we would do, but we just tried to do an apples-to-apples comparison. And that cost, if you estimate conservatively 27,500 per space and you look at operating costs, debt service costs, you're, you're looking for 100 parking spaces at over 4 million. That would be offset by revenue. Now, you're looking at at least two and a half, $3 million of cost. But if, what we really want to do, based upon all the parking evaluation assessment studies that were done, we were looking at a deficit anywhere between 200 and 400, so obviously we probably leaned toward, and I think was being discussed around 400 parking space structure. Now, you're looking at $11 million and probably 60 million in costs over, over that time. So, that, that was the analysis that we went through. And then we looked at, okay, if we started with 100 participants in this program, what that cost would be and we ran the numbers based upon 80%, utilization, which, you know, in retrospect was much higher than what has actually happened. We ranged anywhere between 22 to 25% utilization on a monthly basis. So, we're well under our cost estimates and we had flexibility to scale up or down based upon the usage. And, and that's really what cost, the, the real cost is, is based on usage. So, um, you know, as of last month, as of October, we had, we saw our highest number of rides since we started the program at 22, uh, over 2,200 rides. The annual cost, I think over the last 24 months, I have somewhere the actual costs, um, total cost was over a couple hundred thousand dollars. We're averaging about $7. The average ride cost is about $7.12. We pay the difference of the $2, so we're averaging five, which we estimated about over five, you know, around $5 at the time. So very close in, in our estimates of, of, of costs, program costs.
Okay.
So this program could, could, even if it was a maximum 100% usage at 300 participants, it would still be 10 to 12 years before, 10 to 12 years' worth of this service before it approached the level of what it would cost to build a parking garage?
Right, so we estimated at that time when it was 100 participants. So even if you had 100 participants, you're still looking at a little over 2 point, maybe close to 2.3 million dollars over a 20-year period, which is what we estimated on the parking structure or the, uh, surface lot.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Beth, sorry.
I just wanted to point out, um, that we discussed this in General Services, and the amount, the amount of rides, um, averaging per day has been steadily increasing. And as Michael said, we'd hit our highest, um, numbers this last month, but the averages were 54 a day in October, which is freeing, that's, that's freeing up that many spaces for, um, you know, they're not empty spaces because they're being used by other customers, but that's freeing up spaces in, in our, in maximizing our parking downtown. So I think this has been a really successful program. I've talked to a lot of residents who use the program, are very happy with it. People who learn of it seem excited and happy to use it. Um, so I think it's a really good option for increasing and maximizing the parking problem at a relatively reasonable cost.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mike?
The, um, the program for, uh, bringing, uh, I guess, people who live in Summit, who work in Summit, to do that, I'm just looking through the thing, is this, this, is this the prepaid downtown trip bit?
It's very low. We have very few.
So it looked like there was a little bit of traction in May and June, and it kind of fell off.
And then daily, there's some daily downtown trips, but you're only looking at, is it five participants now, Rita? Five resident downtown employees? And we did a lot of advertising and promotion of this, and it just didn't gain traction on the resident downtown employee. But it is increasing, decreasing, there is evidence of the increased usage by the resident long-term commuter, which is, which is good.
But I, I thought that was a great idea to broaden it out for people who work in the downtown, and it's just that, have we gotten feedback at all on why that's not an accepted?
Anecdotally, I don't, have you heard anything, Rita? I haven't, I, it's, it's a mystery to me. It just seems like if you were a downtown employee and you were working normal business hours, it wouldn't appeal to somebody who's in and out of the office. Like a real estate agent or something like that, but.
Maybe SDI needs to promote it.
Yeah, but, um, just to finish up, no, I, I know, Michael, you, this idea that came up a few years ago, um, I'm glad you're giving talk, speeches at the, the conference, because it's, it was a great idea then, and I still think it's a, a good idea. Uh, you know, we're having these conversations, um, about Broad Street West and parking garages, and I'm still, I still cringe to think about being the last municipality in America that builds a parking garage. And maybe that's what will end up happening, uh, but this was an idea to try and kind of get us to that level where maybe technology would change enough that would bail us out, and who knows whether that'll happen or not. But it's great that people are beginning to be more comfortable with this. I'd love to see 100 people using it a day.
We're getting there. We're over 150%.
That's good, it's a great idea.
Marjorie, did you?
Yeah. Thank you, Council President. I'm just wondering, I think this is a question for Michael, but is there any chance of doing something like this program through, for holiday shoppers, for example? So when you've got those peak times to allow residents to use Lyft and open up, you know, that 11 to 2 o'clock bottleneck that we get in the lots?
Well, if you recall, we, we did a holiday promotion, uh, program back in, um, December of 2015 to just.
That was like a, you could go.
Yeah, it was a $5 per ride.
Right.
Offering, and I, I think that it is something that we should have more conversation around, and perhaps SDI could play a role in that, of discussing, uh, with either Uber or Lyft, it doesn't matter, what kind of promotion, because they are running different type of promotional programs in various cities. Uh, and that could be a way to, you know, through the, through businesses, to be able to provide discounts for rides down there, so people weren't, you know, have to buy. So I think there is a good opportunity there.
I think that'd be a great thing, particularly, it's another thing we can do for residents during the holidays, and that, that was really my thinking, and I think, uh, Council President's thinking as well, about doing something to give back to the residents during that two weeks of the holidays.
What I think should be considered, sorry, Council President.
No, I agree completely.
What, what I think should be considered is how it's no cost to the city, how there can be some type of, if you talk about skin in the game, that can be done through, um, the local businesses to provide some type of discounted ride for anybody who actually spends money in their store. So I think that there is an opportunity there to explore a little more.
Yeah, and, and I think I, my recollection was a couple of years ago, a lot of that was targeted, um, for people who were going out at night.
Right.
And, and that adds a whole other safety factor, too, because obviously we want people to use our restaurants and to have, enjoy, uh, downtown in the holiday seasons, but not to get in a car afterwards and go anywhere. So that they, you get a nice combination of the two, if we can figure that out with the, and I, and I do know that other communities, um, a lot of times restaurants will sponsor those types of things, like free Uber rides home or things, or discounted ones at least, so.
We did zero OTW I.
That, one year we did that. I, I remember that, and that was like a really, that was a great thing, yeah.
Okay. Any comments from members of the public? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Five. Mary, please.
Okay. Uh, this resolution is to authorize a grant application to New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. It pays to plug in to fund electric vehicle charging stations. The pay-to-play, pay-to-plug-in grant would help offset the cost of purchasing and installing electrical vehicle charging stations. This program is to expand New Jersey's growing network of electric vehicle infrastructure, allowing residents, businesses, and government agencies to purchase electric vehicles. EV charging stations on government-owned land allows for 100% reimbursement thresholds. Summit would like to apply for a dual-port, Level 2 charging station. If awarded, it would, it would provide $6,000 in funding. The total cost is $8,148. Parking Services would provide the, the additional funding of 2,148 if awarded this grant. However, Parking Services feels so strongly, strongly about becoming more supportive of environment initiatives, that it is willing to seek council approval for these stations regardless of getting this grant. The DeForest lot has the conduit needed to put these stations in, so I, at this time, move this resolution to support the pay-to-plug-in grant to install two EV charging stations.
I second.
Thank you. Any comments from members of council? Matt?
Uh, first question, uh, when you plug in as a user of these, do you have to pay to, to use them, or is it free? And second is my comment, which is, uh, the reason that I missed your fine presentation at the League.
All right, you're gonna do this offline, honestly?
No, no, no. Because I was attending a, a, a presentation from, about sustainable New Jersey. Uh, and one thing we'll know is that Summit is one of the leading, the greenest communities in all of New Jersey, thanks to people like Marjorie Fox, right? However, I had to sit there and listen to the mayors of Maplewood and Garwood and, um, and South Orange, to name a few, that have already got these, uh, EV charging stations in, in place already, and they were bragging about them, and, and I, I hate to see us fall behind in this area while we lead them in so many others. So the question about, do, do they have to pay? Do users pay, or is it free?
Go ahead, Rita.
There are choices on whether the person can be charged for, uh, charging, um, but what, we tried to do this about four or five years ago, but at the time, um, there weren't that many electric vehicles in town. So here we are now, we're trying to do it, and the reason why we picked DeForest to begin with is what we'll do is, um, they're just gonna pull a ticket, and they'll pay for their parking, as opposed to paying for their charging of time. This way, if they charge in two hours, but they stay four hours, they're paying for their parking. We just feel this was the simplest way to, you know, get on board with it, get the charging stations installed, we have the electricity all right there, uh, we can put proper signage in, um, so that's our plan now. Going forward, if there are other locations, we may have to go through a charging, uh, for the electricity. There could be possible revenue-sharing opportunities, but that's more to look at once within the redevelopment project scope. This is just, let's get a dual charging station in Summit, finally.
Great. Thank you, Rita. Uh, Marjorie?
I had a question also. Thank you, Council President. I think this is a great project. I'm really happy to see it. My only question is, um, have you considered looking at as well, um, a charging station in City Hall lot, so we could look at, um, possibly some of the city vehicles, um, also getting, um, switching over to electric?
I know Paul Castcase and I, we have discussed this, um, and Paul is more of the fleet manager for a lot of the vehicles. We could definitely look into it. Uh, I don't know if we have any current electric vehicles or the thought of purchasing some in future years, but we could definitely consider it.
Well, there certainly are applications, like, you know, inspection vehicles and things like that, or, or parking service vehicles, or.
We, Parking Services did look at it, um, and I also spoke to the Technology Committee about it. The concern is, is with the computers and all of the cameras in the car, it may not keep a charge for very long. So we did look into it when we were purchasing the Ford Focuses, so we did look into it.
Okay, I had heard at League of Municipalities that they were going to be getting more electric vehicles on the state contract, so there may be better options now than there were a few years ago.
So if, with replacing other vehicles in other departments, we could take a, a look at that, surely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Uh, Mike?
Just one question before you leave, Rita. So I, I just want to make sure I understand this. So if they came into the DeForest lot, they would be a ticket, a parking ticket like anybody else?
Right.
Where they stay for an hour, two hours, or three, or whatever, but they would get free electricity from the city?
As of right now, yes.
And, and what's that gonna cost us, uh, every year?
That, um, I'd have to come back to you on that.
Well, that's an important part of the proposal, right?
No, well, yes, I agree it is. Um, I just, this was just to apply for the grant, but I can get you that information, because I have to come back to council to purchase the actual charging stations, but I can definitely get you that information.
So right now, tonight, we're just dealing with the grant application?
Correct.
And so when we get to the next one, when you actually, if we were to get the grant, or you decided independently that we wanted to do this, then we can, I think that's a legitimate question to ask.
Absolutely.
How are we restructuring this? Because I think that's still, that should be still subject to discussion, because.
And Parking Services pays for the electric that is used within the DeForest, in the parking lots. So the city is, would not be paying for that electric, the parking utility will be paying for that electric. But I'll get you the, the data.
Right. So just to point order on this, so we, this is just to authorize submission of the grant, but we're not voting to actually install these things yet?
Correct. If we don't get the grant, or, and then they would have to make a decision.
But even we get the grant, doesn't mean we're going to install these things. We'd have to vote on that separately.
Right, we have to vote on the grant, and we have to vote, once we got the grant, that they will, she would have a device in front of us and say, this is the locations, and this is the thing, and this is the parking authority's contribution.
Or if we're, or if we're not awarded it, that I would still like to come back with all of that data to either fund it completely, or also with the grant if we're awarded it, and the other funds with all the electrical information that you're looking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, well. Right. Because I would say, I'm all for optionality. I'd love to see whether we have the option or not. I honestly have serious reservations of, on government sponsoring these types of things, it, uh, but that's a discussion for another day, but I'm certainly happy to think about optionality, whether or not we can get a grant or not.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, anybody else? Thank you, Rita, by the way. I think, I mean, personally, I, I think that it's really good that we are thinking of these issues and, and moving forward with them, because this is a big concern for residents about sustainability, and I think.
And it gains us points for our sustainability.
Yeah, and I, and I think it shows that we are thinking through these issues, so I appreciate that. Okay.
Sorry, one more.
Yes.
We have so many Teslas in town, I think, uh, we could approach perhaps Elon Musk himself to give us a grant.
Okay, that's a possibility. Any comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number six, Mary.
Okay. Resolution 6047. This resolution is to authorize the grant application and acceptance of the CDBG Community Block Grant Application, Year 45. This resolution, if awarded, would fund social service proposals to One Project Independent, uh, Independent Social Worker Housing Authority, Senior Connections Bus, Community Programs, Share the Fun Club, Summit, Community Programs, and Facilities and Public Improvements, Summit Housing Authority Bathtub, conversions for accessibility at 12 Chestnut Avenue. The deadline for this application is December 7th, so at this time, I would like to move this resolution to seek funding from CDBG, funding application for year 45.
I second.
Thank you. Comments from members of council? We heard some of these issues raised when we had the, the representatives from the Summit Housing Authority come in front of us. Uh, any comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've added a new resolution, General Services. Mary?
All right, here we go. This is my last one. Resolution to authorize execution of Union County CDBG Program Year 45 Grant, 146 Morris Avenue Summit Affordable Home Ownership Project. Um, for details of this, I'm gonna throw it over to City Administrator Rogers, uh, if you want to talk any more about this.
Sure. Yes, and we do have our, the executive director from Morris Habitat here, but essentially, this is providing funds, uh, this is a project that, um, the city has committed 1.2 million dollars to, uh, 12 affordable housing units, uh, that are, are actually before the Board of Adjustment, the application, uh, and it is to fund, uh, an affordable housing project that is, uh, being proposed by Morris Habitat for Humanity, and, uh, they're looking for a $300,000 Community Development Block Grant, uh, and so it's before this governing body to, uh, consider and, um, support. And we have the executive director, Blair Bravo, here, if, when you open it up for the public.
Yeah, and I, and I, I'm sorry, did somebody second?
I was just gonna say, move this resolution at this time.
Yeah, nobody seconded?
I second.
Thank you, thank you, right, okay. Uh, any comments or questions? Because otherwise I'll introduce this Bravo. If she could just come up and say hello to all of us, she's waited patiently through many, many hours of hearing the rest, but now you have a sense of the city of government, the city government in Summit.
That's, I, I served 16 years on my local government, so this is old home week. Um, well, thank you very much. My name is Blair Schleicher Bravo, I'm the CEO of Morris Habitat for Humanity, and we are very happy to be back again in Summit, hopefully. Uh, we have our application before the zoning board on December 3rd, as Mr. Rogers mentioned. Our first project was at 39 Morris Avenue, uh, where we built six units, uh, and now we're proposing 12, um, at 146 Morris. A very nice, um, design, and, uh, I'm really looking forward to moving forward. So this application will help us to fund that project. Actually, it's gonna help us fund the, um, uh, the acquisition of the property.
Okay. So, uh, so the next step for you guys here is, is with the zoning board in a couple of weeks' time, assuming that they give approval. Is it, is your project dependent upon getting this money?
No.
Okay.
It's not depend upon it, but I.
It's nice, of course, to have. I understood.
Yes. It's, it's a close to $3 million project.
Right.
The all-in, and so we have a million two from the, the town, and then the mortgages will be about a million five if we can sell them apart, and so that leaves us with a gap.
Okay. And assuming that you get approval from the zoning board, what's your estimated time horizon?
Uh, we are looking to, uh, break ground in, in March, so that's our early, so break ground in March, get the site work done by the end of June. This will be modular construction. We're very thrilled about that, and I will tell you, the architect is Seth Lieb, who does a lot of work in town already, and he designed the 39 Morris Avenue, so you know it's gonna be a really good design. Uh, so the modulators, uh, will be dropped sometime in the summer, and we expect to finish the project, uh, fingers crossed by December, but it'll prob, probably be first quarter 2020, uh, which is a much tighter timeframe than what we did 39 Morris. So the nice thing is, we'll be bringing 12 families into homeownership, and hopefully we can move some of the folks off of the Housing Authority into homeownership, freeing up those spaces, so that we can reduce that seven-year waiting list that I just heard you have, which would be really nice, and get people into homeownership, break the cycle of poverty, pay taxes, property taxes.
So these were, yeah, so they, these are homes for sale?
All homes for sale, that's what we do. There's 30-year, actually, I'm not sure, the last one, I think, was a 50-year deed restriction, I believe. It was a, well, Joe Billy's not here. So, but we had at least a 30-year deed restriction on the homes, so they cannot be sold to anybody but income-eligible households for 30 years. And we have a zero foreclosure rate, I'd like to just throw that in.
That's great. This is why we held you so long, we wanted to have actually a little bit of a discussion with you about, because we've heard so much about this project, we've authorized this money much earlier in the year, and we wanted to get a sense of where the status was going forward.
We are, we're really thrilled about this whole, this whole project, yeah.
That's great. Anybody, anybody else?
December 3rd, cross your fingers.
How many bedrooms are the units?
They'll, six two and six three bedrooms, low and moderate, and we have to comply with the state's affordable housing rules and regulations in terms of, you know, the numbers of low and moderate.
So some of the units are low-income, and some of them are moderate-income?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
People whose annual incomes are families who annual incomes between mid-30s and mid-70s household income, so.
Okay, anybody else? Well, we thank you for waiting through the evening. We appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Now, Mary gets to say no more unless I'm aye. Consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, so.
Second.
There you go.
You can take whoever you want. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. New business and council member comments, anybody? Okay, if not, Happy Thanksgiving, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.